Yeah. All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order at 5:46 and acknowledge our meeting's status. Members of the public may directly address the board by attending in-person meetings and submitting a public comment card. We do not take public comment through Zoom and do not guarantee streaming via Zoom if the platform malfunction for any reason. Members of the public are encouraged to share their thoughts and concerns with me at cquinn@petk12.org if they are not able to attend in person. Are there any comments from the public on closed session items? Hearing none, we will adjourn to closed session until 6:00 P. M. All right, I'm going to reconvene the meeting at 6:04. I'm reconvening the meeting. Thank you all very much. And now trustee Cloud is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you all, and we will move on to special recognitions, reports, and presentations, starting with the introduction of our acting superintendents. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I know. Okay, so can I invite Dr. Mondragon to the front right here? All right, so we are excited to announce that Dr. Esmeralda Mondragon will serve as the acting superintendent for Petaluma City Schools during the fall semester. She will begin her tenure in late August to give some transition time as superintendent Matthew Harris begins his leave. Dr. Mondragon boasts a distinguished career as a highly experienced and esteemed educational leader for over 30 years. Her extensive background encompasses a range of leadership roles from classroom teaching to superintendent positions demonstrating her unwavering commitment to the educational excellence and student success. Early in her career, Dr. Mondragon served as an elementary bilingual support teacher, junior high school teacher, high school vice principal, junior high school principal, and an elementary principal. This teaching and school administration foundation has been instrumental in her effective leadership and understanding of the educational landscape. Dr. Mondragon served as superintendent of Calistoga Joint Unified School District from 2009 to 2017. She fostered a culture of high expectations and accountability, and under her leadership, Calistoga's schools received numerous accolades, including California Distinguished School and National Blue Ribbon Recognition. Dr. Mondragon has served as an educational consultant since 2017, coaching and mentoring cabinet-level directors and supporting the Human Resources Department at Mill Valley School District. She's also mentored elementary principals in Sonoma Valley Unified School District and played a critical role as interim superintendent for SBU SD from November 2020 to June 2021 through one of the most challenging periods in public education. Dr. Mondragon has held various central office leadership roles, including area superintendent, school improvement officer for San Diego Unified School District, and business operations administrator for Palmdale School District. Dr. Mondragon's contributions to higher education include teaching educational research at San Francisco State University and serving on dissertation committees for doctoral candidates at San Diego State University and La Verne University. Dr. Mondragon believes that every student who attends our schools has the potential to achieve, and our role is to support them in their journey. She states, "I'm excited to partner with the Board of Trustees, staff, parents, and the community to maintain the high educational standards Petaluma City Schools is known for." Dr. Esmeralda Mondragon's dedication to education and leadership and community engagement spans 41 years of service, making her a remarkable figure in the field. Her extensive experience and accomplishments reflect her passion for creating positive lasting impacts that is welcome in our district. Thank you for welcoming Dr. Esmeralda Mondragon as she joins the team at Petaluma City Schools.
I don't believe that there is anything more to say. Thank you. I'm humbled and honored that the board, as well as Superintendent Harris, has welcomed me, even though it's going to be a short period of time that I will be with you. I look forward to working with each one of you and getting to know you and your priorities, and definitely keep the Petaluma City School District whole for when Superintendent Harris returns. Thank you.
And next, I'd like to bring Dr. Luanne Carlemanio forward. We're excited to announce that Dr. Luanne Carlemanio will be stepping into the role of acting superintendent for the spring semester at Petaluma City Schools. Her tenure will begin on January 14th, 2025, to support a smooth transition between acting superintendents. Dr. Carlemanio holds a Bachelor of Science in Genetics with an emphasis in biochemistry from UC Davis, teaching credentials in life science and chemistry from Chapman University, a Master's of Education Leadership from Sonoma State University, and a doctorate in organizational leadership from Branman University. Her doctoral research, trust and leadership, exemplary superintendent build successful principal teams in elementary school districts underscores her commitment to fostering effective educational leadership. Dr. Carlemanio's professional journey is marked by diverse roles and accomplishments. Her career began as a high school science teacher, followed by teaching integrated math and science at middle school level. She moved from the classroom to administration as a middle school vice principal and then an elementary principal. She served as the director of curriculum and instruction before taking on the role of superintendent at Sonoma Valley Unified. Personally, Dr. Carlemanio has deep roots in Sonoma Valley, having lived there her entire life. She and her husband, whom she met in middle school, have been married nearly 40 years and have three grown children residing in the Bay Area and Southern California. In her leisure time, she enjoys swimming, hiking, and spending time at Lake Almanor, her favorite retreat. As Dr. Luanne Carlemanio steps into her new role with Petaluma City Schools team, she brings a considerable enthusiasm for engaging with the school community. She anticipates visiting school sites, attending student events, and collaborating closely with staff and the administration team. Her commitment to educational excellence and fostering a vibrant school community make her an exciting addition to PCS. Thank you for welcoming Dr. Luanne Carlemanio as she joins the team at Petaluma City Schools.
Like Esmeralda, I'm just thrilled to be here, and I just want to say thank you to Matthew and the board for putting your trust in us because we are completely engaged and all-in in doing this work. I really, I've been in San Mateo County for the last seven years, and so it's nice to be back in Sonoma County. It's actually wonderful. So I look forward to being with the students, going to the school sites, and just following up on the great work that Matthew is already doing here in the district. So thank you for welcoming both of us. Happy to be here.
Wonderful. Thank you both. We're really looking forward to the next year with the both of you, and thank you for coming up for your introduction. Next up, we have school plans for student achievement. Who's taking on this one?
That would be me.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to give you an overview of our school plan for student achievement. This, or otherwise known as CIPS, the CIPS is a document that represents our school cycle of continuous improvement. There's an annual process for developing, reviewing, and updating CIPS, including comprehensive review of data and the development of actions necessary to achieve school goals. So are CIPSs required? They are if schools are operating programs funded through the consolidated applications or Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV type programs. Also, schools that are under comprehensive or are eligible for comprehensive support and improvement, CSI, or additional targeted support and improvement, ATS, are required to have plans. And of course, boards that may require school sites to have CIPS-type plans would be required as well. Schools that typically develop the plans are aligned with our LCAP, and they don't necessarily need to be approved every year unless there's some material difference to the plan. But at our district, we typically review them every year as a part of that process. So what you'll find in the CIPS usually needs assessments, stakeholder involvements should be a big part of the CIPS. Goals, strategies, action services, and proposed expenditures are all part of the requirements under the CIPS. It's a big, one of the big responsibilities of the school site council is the development and approval of the school site plan. That's a big responsibility that they have. A lot of the local decisions they make there based on their needs assessments will come from the school site council and also the stakeholders that the sites would involve as part of the planning and development of the CIPS. After the school site council approves, the governing board approves the CIPS as well. No categorical funds or Title I dollars can be spent unless it's been approved by the board. So that's why it's critical for school sites that we have that are under Title I funds or receive Title I funds or any kind of hierarchical funds are approved by the board before any of that can be spent. It's a living document, so oftentimes there may be some changes that need to happen in their CIPS, and school site councils can come together to make some changes or amendments in that particular plan. With that, our plans are up for approval, and we invited all our school site administrators to be here to answer any questions that you might have. And I'd like to open up to any questions as you had an opportunity to review the CIPS. If there's any particular questions you have, the principal should be able to zoom in and respond to that.
Who wants to start? Y'all usually have so many questions.
Tony, do you see, what do you see as themes in the CIPS across the campuses or, you know, issues that, you know, that you see across the campus?
You know, as I think back of the plans that I reviewed, what, what they should reflect is their, their local needs, but, but a big piece of that are some things that, that we would see district-wide, things like our English learners and what, what actions they should be having to address our English learners' achievement, achievement, as well as students with disabilities. We are differentiated assistants for DA and required to have that in our LCAP, and so should also be reflected in our, in the site CIPS, which, which many of them have, if not all of them. Around climate and action, you know, we've been focusing on connectedness and, and, and culture, school culture. So a lot of the schools will have actions and activities around that as well. And so I think, you know, as, as we, you know, look at our school plans as a, as an opportunity to reflect on, on what our greatest needs are and how we move forward as a, as a school site and as an organization. I think what we'll see is that it should continuously get, get better as we continue to develop our site administration on, on how to develop their CIPS, how to, how to do root cause analysis. We've been looking at data much more so the last few years than we ever have, and I think the site administration is beginning to develop the capacity and really understanding how that helps drive a lot of the decisions that should be made during the development of their CIPS. So you, you know, the actions in many of our plans are more specific than they have been in the past as well. So especially around our English learners and our students with disabilities and some of our low-performing students, students with social, economically disadvantaged students that we know the gaps are consistent across many of our data points should be relevant and clear in their plans.
So thank you for that, Tony. You know, so we, you know, review these every year. Can you give me example of how these are being used during the year? You know, how does, how does what's in the plan actually manifest itself in action during the school year?
Like, like, like the LCAP, you know, we continuously have meetings. The school site council should be having meetings to monitor their plans, to look at, you know, their actions, are the actions being effective? Are they working or not working as a part of the cycle of continuous improvement? So the site's responsibility is to look at their plans continuously, to, to let it be the driving force of what they do at their school sites, as much as LCAP is what drives a lot of things that we do as well. And the LCAP and their school site plans alignment becomes critical in that aspect because we look at system-wide, big picture things, and also how that kind of translates into the school site. And the school site plans should reflect that as well. So the school site's responsibility is to continuously look at their CIPS, monitor it, make sure that the actions that they put in there are being utilized, that they're given a budget, and the budget is aligned to those actions. They're, they're using the money as it's intended. That's reflected in their CIPS. So what we do is we help, help them monitor those things. We provide, you know, training and support, meeting with their school site councils or with administration and help them find ways to best monitor those things and make adjustments as they need to. Budgets may change, money might change, and they'll have to make some adjustments in their CIPS. That's why it becomes kind of a living document where they, they should be reflecting on it. The challenge is always, you know, can they get a school site council? Can they get quorum? Can they have the meeting time so that they can make those conversations and make those adjustments as needed?
You know, since we have the principals here, I would love to hear from anyone who wants to step up and give an example of how you use the CIPS in the past that it resulted in impacts that we can measure. Now, not only to do a little bragging, but also to edify our fellow principals who might not be using the CIPS as effectively as we should.
So we have, we have Ms. Miller here in person. I don't want to pick on her. She's the only one in person, but we have the rest of our principals who are on Zoom, so Dave, maybe we can bring up. I know.
And just to give you some encouragement, just to give you some encouragement, Ruth, I just, I really appreciated your CIPS. Especially just like really targeting the need for bilingual aids and support, and your school site council was one of the few that was diverse and representative of your school community, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Joanna. And so I am really grateful for the opportunity to be learning. I spent a lot of time this year and last year. Thank you to Lindsay Munn and Tony for helping teach us how to do the whole process of CIPS and, and to how to have a site council. So we've spent a lot of time this year really training our site council, and we have, you know, and just training them how to have the meetings and how to make the plan and the budget. And it's been really exciting to do that. It's been challenging, but exciting, and now we are at the point where we're very proud to present this living document that will really, I, I really do believe that we will see a big shift by following this plan that we have put in place. And thank you, Joanna, for noticing that there are a lot of things McDowell has a lot of need, and the biggest need that we have is our literacy deficit. And also the development of the English for our English language learners, and so we're really excited. I've got one of my amazing teachers right here helping. She's one of our members, Kelly Wood, in the site council, and she's been a good solid rock on the team as well. So we're excited about being able to move forward with this plan and to better support our students. And we also, they helped to guide us, Tony and Lindsay, to write very specific goals, and so it's going to be really easy to see, are we achieving these goals or are we not? And what do we need to shift? And so, and so it's just very clear, focusing on our students with disabilities, focusing on our English language learners, and focusing on the social emotional piece as well. And we're really looking at chronic absenteeism, which has been huge all over since the pandemic, and so just seeing how we can get kids back in school feeling safe and being successful. So that is our plan, and I'm happy to answer any other questions or let other principals speak. All right. Thank you all for your support.
Tony, is any, any other principal that wants to jump in and answer it? The question really is, how does this, how does this document live and how is this a living document at your school? Give us an example.
I can say a couple of things about San Antonio. Can you hear me?
Yes, great. Mr. Stevenson at San Antonio and Valley Oaks.
Fair enough. I think that a couple of things that, that we've seen working for San Antonio is our ability to utilize the, all of our resources for suspension rates. That we were not in CSI for suspension rates in the past. However, there was, you know, with, with PBIS and other significant efforts, we were able to maintain one, one suspension for the whole year at San Antonio High School in a clientele like we have. It's pretty amazing. But again, it's because of the way we designated our funds to put the right people in place and create an environment and a culture that was safe for our students. And then going and looking forward, I know that graduation rates are a concern for San Antonio. I recognize that. I've seen this since we started WASC in September. There's been a trend in that direction. However, we are working as a staff at San Antonio and have made adjustments on our end. And then I believe as we roll into the next year, we're going to utilize the Alt Ed task force and find ways systemically that we can make changes so that our students are coming to us a little bit sooner, a little bit more, that where we're able to capture credits to have them graduate on time. And so there's, there's components in our CIPS that specifically address that as well.
Do you, or Tony, whoever wants to answer, are there common assessments like math and ELA for our alternative education schools?
No, there are not at this time. We've tried to do those before, and then we were working with Alt Ed articulation, and they worked on it. We, they, they came up with a plan at one point. It wasn't that successful at the point, and then COVID came, and we've never re-engaged. And realistically, it would be San Antonio, Valley Oaks, Sonoma Mountain, Carpe Diem in that.
Any, any other principal want to jump in and take that question?
Are there, it's, I'd like to hear from the comprehensive high schools.
Yeah, hello, can you guys hear me? So similarly to what you've already heard, the process that we follow is working with our school site council and developing the plan throughout the year. The data that we really have been focusing on a lot has been our CASP data and the California dashboard to guide a lot of our practice and decision-making. And so with that, we, you know, looking at the data from year to year, evaluating it throughout the year, getting the input of our parents and our staff involved in the school site council, and then determine from there what direction we want to go. And so you see that we're targeting areas for improvement as a primary, aside from overall students, is our students with disabilities and our EL students where there's huge margins of, of learning differences. The learning success is lower with those students overall. And so we've developed some strategies from last year that we implemented, and then some changes this year with some, some new academic supports and academic interventions that we're trying to put in place. Provide additional support for students outside of the school day is one of the areas of focus that we've identified for both English and math. And, and overall, what we're looking to do is trying to, you know, close that gap that, you know, that we discuss year in and year out. And, and within that, trying to find new resources and supports that we can put in place as, as we further develop our tiered support. So looking at tier two supports for student intervention for academics as well as for other reasons. One of the bigger things that our team looked at this year was our suspension data. And so one, one thing that we want to do is really target how we're addressing student discipline and how we're, how, what are the strategies, one of the tools that we're using to really ensure that we can provide support for students so that they're not missing more school time and that we are redirecting those negative behaviors that happen on campus. And one thing, one thing Sheldon, that you asked, like, what is something that's, that we've had in the past that we've kind of kept going with? You know, through the pandemic and post-pandemic, we did put, we did, we did allocate considerable amount of money from our school, from our site discretionary fund. And thankfully, we've been supported with our district office and providing additional LMFT support on our campus. And so we do have a LMFT on our campus that has, that may not be there otherwise to support students and, and helping students through this, you know, growing mental health crisis that we've been experiencing over the last few years.
Gio, what do you attribute the low graduation rate for EL and students with disabilities to, as well as the suspension disparities? Is there anything that, like, you guys have looked at that you can think of that's causing those huge gaps in those areas?
There isn't anything that, that we have been able to, like, singularly identify as a cause for that. I know that we do have a lot of students who are in our EL program. There are migrant students who are coming to us at older ages. And, and sometimes it's difficult to be able to get them through to articulate to graduation. That's not an answer for all of that, for the suspension piece as well. Whether it's EL students or it's our Latino students or it's students with disabilities, what are the reasons for those behaviors? What are the reasons for them, for the, for the behaviors that are being exhibited on campus? Those are the things that we are continuing to work on and trying to develop strategies and understand a little bit more about what is that's causing that and why that's occurring at such a high rate.
Yeah, I see that, like, Carpe Diem and Sonoma Mountain both have 100% graduation rates. I wonder if we can start referring students to those schools sooner because we're looking at like 85 and 87% graduation rates at, at our comprehensive high schools. And this isn't just a question for you, Gio, but for anyone who wants to answer, anyone up here. I saw a lot about addressing, like, students and student behavior, but not a ton about addressing, like, adult behavior. I think Petaluma Junior talked about anti-bias training. I'm sorry if I missed anyone else's CIPS, but just wondering if there's been any, you know, focus on, I mean, we're seeing tons of disparities. I'm sorry, can't like rule out bias in that, so I'm just wondering if that has come up or how that can be added, if not just at the site level, but district-wide as well to close some of these gaps.
This is Greg again, from San Antonio. I just wanted to go back and, and just kind of frame the 100% graduation rates at Sonoma Mountain and Carpe Diem. I was leading those schools at that time, and honestly, this is, it's, this is no joke, but we would, you know, I had a greater opportunity to vet students to, to look at the ones that were most likely to graduate, even though we were credit recovery. So yes, we, there could still be credit deficiencies, but if they were too far past, we would refer them to San Antonio. So now here I am, San Antonio. And so, so yes, I have inherited part of what we built, and we're going to work on that as well. And so truthfully, that's why the graduation rates at those two schools, plus the amazing staff that they have, but that's why those are so high because of the way we were able to look at and bring kids in.
Right, but then if we, like, caught them sooner at the comprehensive high schools, like, move them over, you know, late freshman year, early sophomore year.
Yes.
I'm sure we would still see the same 100% graduation rates and then less, you know, we wouldn't have the 85% rates.
And typically, and typically, our, our alternative high schools, students are coming over as juniors, juniors or seniors, not, you know. But yeah, your, your point is well taken, Joanna, I think. Particularly when we see students who are struggling freshman year, sophomore year. We have stories, we were just, we were meeting with, I was meeting with Greg on, it was today, this morning, we were talking about this, and it's been a long day. Just the, you know, students who coming over as seniors with very few credits, we need to be catching students much, much earlier, which is part of why we're even looking, you know, taking a deep dive into our, our Alt Ed programs.
Right, and then our last piece is we would like to see the students at the small schools sooner, as well as our San Antonio. However, San Antonio, there's a 16-year-old age requirement where the small schools, there's not. And so we would like to see them, though, when they're 16, if we can, and whether they return, we would be happy to return them to the comprehensive site, or if they graduate with us. But the goal is to have them graduate on time at one site or another. That would be our ultimate goal.
I think also too that there's something to be said about the interventions and developing strategies at the sites that we need to, we need to build moving forward. I mean, pre-pandemic, I would say education was different and how students learned was different. Now, post-pandemic and, and still. Now, post pandemic and, and still, still really dealing with the pitfall that. The one thing that we're a little late to the game on is, is developing those interventions and putting them in place throughout the school day. And a lot of that comes down to, you know, human resources. It's having people on campus that can be there to provide that additional support, to identify those learning deficits and to be able to help build that with students. Part of the struggle that we've, that we've always faced when it's, when the conversation comes around about alternative, alternative education is one, Sonoma, Sonoma and Sonoma Mountain and Carpe Diem have capacity limits. They're not schools that can have 100 kids in them each. So you're looking at about 30 students per. And additionally, we've also encountered that there's a 15-year-old age requirement. And so what we, what we encounter is the fact that students and families aren't necessarily ready to say, yes, let's go to alternative ed at that point. Some families want their kids to graduate from their comprehensive high school and be able to complete that. And we need to do a better job of finding those supports for them so that they can recover and they can come back up. And so those are things that, that when we talk about strategies that we're putting in place in our SIPSA, a lot of our strategies are designed, at least this year at Pelham High School, are designed to try to catch those students so that we can try to develop that plan for them. And going into their sophomore years to, to recover those credits that doesn't require them to do it in summer school and that they have support on campus to do that. So those are the, some of the things I think that we are trying to work towards to be able to support our students. And not that, and, and I'll say this on a personal level, I think our alternative ed programs are great. So my, my point of saying that is not necessarily that I'm trying to say that it's not a good idea to go alternative ed. I think they are great programs that provide a lot of great opportunities for students. But I do think that we should be trying to catch these students at our sites and doing, and we do need to do a better job of supporting them to, to move in the right direction.
Yeah, we're seeing that the same students that have the lower graduation rates are also have like the higher suspension rates. Like one school, triple for EL students, double for students with disabilities as compared to their counterparts. We're also seeing those are the ones with high absenteeism. And I think Tony, you were the first one that really opened my eyes to like just the ties and I know it's out there, but I had not really fully digested. So I was talking with him when he initially came on about just like the more days that the students out of school, the less likely they are to graduate. And if they're already chronically absent, then we're telling them to stay home for three to five days. Or even, you know, if it's something more quote minor, one or two days. So I'm just wondering if anyone or our district at some point has explored in-school suspensions? I know that we do have some more of that so that the students can still be in school. So we do, and then we can keep them caught up on their work.
Sorry, Zoom, Zoom world is managed, I apologize. I mean, we do use in-school suspension for a lot of our students and a lot of cases. It still counts towards our suspension count. It doesn't change our suspension data. So it is utilized on, and I'll speak for Pelham High, it is utilized, utilized on our campus.
I guess I'll save it for future business, but I think we should look at like how many days of in-school versus out-of-school suspension each school. So Tony, I guess for you, a future business. Okay, thank you.
As well as it may, it may be helpful too, Tony. I mean, we, we talk about, you know, Saturday school and credit, credit recovery may be tied into that concept.
Sorry, was that Christina?
Christina?
It was, sorry. I just wanted to make sure you heard like Costa's perspective on everything because you were asking about the comprehensive sites. And I know we've been really working hard with our team to utilize other means of corrections in lieu of suspension, unless it's one of those five offenses that are mandatory for suspension and by, you know, state law. And I also think that we really have been, aside from everything Gio said, additionally, kind of through the WASP process and just having a newer admin team, we really use the SIPSA as like almost a form of a needs assessment or data analysis to identify those specific challenges that we already kind of went over. But we definitely saw that through the process, like our graduation rates are being affected by the low student achievement in those core subjects and the high absenteeism. So that was really something actually beneficial for us to identify as an issue or a spot that we need to focus on because now we can gather that stakeholder input and do some goal setting to, and teach teacher collaboration. And that is one of our changes that we're making that came out of the process of WASC and SIPSA is that we're having Wednesday dedicated time just to develop PLCs or professional learning communities where teachers are really driven to collaborate around the student achievement data. So it will be different pockets depending on how the teachers are serving the different groups of students that are identified as like needing those supports. But specifically with our EL students, our special ed students, those students that are being suspended for those offenses that kind of contribute to their chronic truancy. And then hopefully we can use that as data to gather, to implement our resource allocation as we move forward into the next SIPSA round.
Thank you, Christina. Yeah, I could see in yours, you were like, like Sheldon was saying, talking about strategies you guys had done in the past and implementing, implementing new ones as well as like looking at your WASC. So thank you for sharing.
Absolutely.
I was just wondering how the eighth grade students who are, I don't know, we used to call them non-promotes, but you know, they're, they, they're still promoted into freshmen. So you know, what, what kinds of support systems do we have? Is there something? I mean, they, I know that, that, you know, they're oftentimes already failing when they enter, you know, at least an English class or a math class or, or a core class of some kind. So, and their, their study habits still haven't improved, whatever is contributing to their failures as eighth graders. So I was just wondering if anybody's investigated that, you know, combining, you know, having something in the SIPSA that coordinates, you know, the eighth grade schools with a comprehensive or any of the, well, the comprehensives really for freshman year. I don't know whether that's a thing, but it seems like it should, it's to me that missing piece.
The ninth grade's the most important year. Yeah.
And I think there, yeah, there's almost a couple of questions that, that is that, that eighth grade, what's the support there for the eighth grade as they are preparing for high school? And then we know from studies, lots of recent studies around that, just that, the ninth grade year. I mean, you see ninth grade academies pop and you see all sorts of things happen with, with ninth grade classes. But I think it would be great to have Ray or Justin as, as an eighth grade or even if Liza or Gina, if you're there, if you want to talk about the supports for eighth grade, particularly I think for, for Pendleton Junior and for Kennelworth. And then maybe, you know, maybe Christina or, or Gio to talk about that ninth grade year. Would that, would that helpful?
Yeah, like how, how they use that information that's coming from the junior highs in terms of providing supports for the ninth.
Yeah, no, even with just that collaboration between Kennelworth and Casa and then the collaboration between Pendleton Junior and Pendleton High School. And we can hear from the, the two sides of town.
And if we still have a summer bridge, I'm wondering as well.
So I can jump in here, assuming you can hear me. So, so what we do, what we did this year was we tried to, at least for our students who were, whose grades were lower, attendance issues, things like that. We really did try to focus creating a trusted adult on campus, finding somebody that they can connect with. We utilized our student advisors who did regular grade checks, social emotional checks in addition to LMFTs and then students who might have ERMS counseling. So we really did focus on trying to re-engage them into campus. I, I, I would say we need to work on how we are, what data would look like in terms of determining what our success would be. And then I will say, just because I will have a different role next year, this is one of the pieces that I will be looking at as part of that role and looking at what opportunities do we have for our junior high, middle school students? And what they need in order to be successful and then moving on to high school. And since Joanna brought up common assessments, I will say, I think that that is something that we need to continue to explore. Because one of the challenges that my site council had, and honestly I do too, the junior high is only, since it's only two years, CASP data is, is, is basically comparing apples to oranges. You're not comparing, you're not comparing cohorts. And so it's very difficult to determine the success of actions when you have, when you're comparing a seventh grader, seventh grade scores, the seventh grade scores. And then trying to figure out, okay, what was successful, what was not. So I would say the area of that would be a focus for, I would say comprehensively overall at all school sites would be those common assessments so that we can start looking at cohort groups, student to student.
I, I hear what you're saying, Justin, and I think, I don't know, I'm gonna push back a little bit because we are seeing in all of the subgroups besides Asian and white students, huge disparities in math. So it's not like it's all of the students, it's certain ones. And it's not just Kennelworth, it's like all of our schools. So.
I think that's definitely because the system's working right for the students who it's working for. And so that's why it's really important as we partner with the junior high schools and help the students transition into high school and have a higher chance of being successful in high school, that we're looking at the student groups that are not achieving at the same rate and asking like, not just around behavioral and social emotional needs, but also academic needs. I think that's where we need to start looking at building like robust supports around the academic piece of that too. I know this year at both of the comprehensive secondaries, we started pushing out our behavior expectations and kind of setting the foundation. Casa's is rise. And so, you know, the kids know about that and the community is starting to really know about that. It's not just the respect and integrity and safety, but the engagement piece, the E at the end of rise. That's really about how students are able to like actively participate in their own academic progress. But that is definitely something that came out and was highlighted by our needs assessment via the SIPSA and our WASP process. So that's something that we're working on and wanting to partner with other school sites, both secondary and the junior highs to continue to, to identify like ways that we can help the junior high school students transition more smoothly into high school and have that more robust academic support. And not just all kids, it should be for all kids obviously, but it needs to be targeted for the groups that you were just talking about.
I want to pivot back to elementary schools if that's okay, just comparing, oh, go for it.
All right, the, the Zoom world, I miss it. So this is Ray from Pendleton Junior. Much, much of the strategies have already been said, but what I'll keep going back to, and Sheldon asked how we use this throughout the year. And Joanna, you asked like, what kind of measurement do we use for adults? And at every turn, I was talking with Matthew the other day, it, it seems like it always comes back to relationships. Justin alluded to it a little bit. So we wrote in our SIPSA, the trusted adult goal as well. And so, you know, we've risen 12 or 14% over the last two years with students that have a trusted adult on campus. And I think he wrote our goal to be 20% over the next three years of increase. But within that goal, it was not only students that feel like they have a trusted adult on campus, it's really that question of teachers and staff make a priority of understanding my life like outside of school. So it's connecting with these students that have these diverse backgrounds, diverse experiences and bringing them back into the fold. And it's all kind of tied together. So as our trusted adult data went up this year, our suspension data went down, our chronic absenteeism data went down. And as these students feel that connection on campus, it seems like it just, it reels them back into the fold more. And specifically with students that are struggling academically, we ran monthly D and F list reports. And we tried to have the support, supportive type meetings. I know all these schools do that as well where, you know, students with just low level kind of needs would meet with our student advisor and ones that had more social, emotional, behavioral, academic needs would be bumped up to our counselors or LMFTs or administration. And again, it's just like throwing as much support and as many adults around these kids as possible. And it seems the more connected they are to school and the more people they know they have in their corner, the more successful they'll be.
Awesome. Thank you, Ray. That's actually a really good segue into what I wanted to talk about with elementary schools. So I love it. I noticed that, I mean, we know that multilingual learners are a big group that needs extra attention at all of our school sites. And I know some of our elementary schools have no bilingual staff. And so I was really shocked not to see like any focus on that, on some of the school sites, like not hiring even a bilingual instructional aide or anything. So I, I just wanted to note that and maybe suggest that in future years and just suggest, I mean, I know how hard it is to get involvement on these things. It's not easy. And a lot of the people that do have time are people that look like me, but like just getting more by bilingual families to have input will have come up with all of these solutions. Yeah. And then I think we're missing Valley Vista from the attachments. I don't know if it's just my computer like not loading one. So if I'm wrong, I would love to be wrong, but that was something that, that came to mind. And I'm sure involvement is an issue for elementaries and not comprehensive secondaries. But yeah, if we want to focus on multilingual learners, especially at the elementary level, like so much of it is down to the families, right? Like kindergarteners aren't the ones choosing to, to just skip school. So having bilingual people on campus to talk to the families in the languages that they speak makes such a big difference in terms of just attendance and attendance at all of the other, all the other events. So not really a question, just me rambling. Any other questions or rambles? And SIPSA's will come up again later on the agenda if anyone does develop any follow-up questions or if anyone in the public wants to make a public comment. It'll be there on the consent agenda. So with that, thank you, Tony. Thank you to all of the principals that are here in the room and on Zoom. We will move on to environmental literacy and climate act, climate action committee update.
Great. Thank you. I, I'd like to ask Dr. Osterman to come up and help present the update on our environmental literacy climate action committee.
Hi, everyone. Dan Osterman, College and Career Pathways Coordinator for the District. And I'm here to provide an update for the Environmental Literacy and Climate Action Committee that we've been holding this year. So much exciting work to share. Thank you for the opportunity to provide some updates here. And this will also be an introduction to our, really the main attraction here. So I can't wait for you to hear our amazing interns present their work this year. I, I put this up here, of course, it's powerful. We all know this, this incredible citizen on our planet. But it, I think it really speaks to what I've experienced leading this committee this year. And that is, we lean into this work a little bit and it gives so much back. There's a lot of engagement and interest and passion and desire to really move this work forward. So quickly, we had about 12 teachers across the district participate. 22 students, nine parents and more community partners than we can probably name. I'll, I'll, I'll list a few in just a moment, but again, we, we wave this flag and they will come. We have a huge array of engaged and willing partners for environmental literacy and climate action. Our North Stars for the group, just to quickly review, absolutely the 2021 resolution that you all passed in this very room. The 2015 Blueprint for Environmental Literacy that the state of California put together. And the Green Ribbon Schools Program, which is really stems from the US Department of Education. And then each state, well, not every state, we wish every state, but many states have adopted a framework. California definitely being one of them. And some, just there are other North Stars of course, but these are the three primary. This, in addition to our district mission, I highlighted the part there that I feel speaks most directly to our, our other North Stars and that's resilient, caring and responsible members of the community. And then even more specifically, goal number two, our district will introduce curriculum and programming to further our district focus on environmental literacy and climate action. And by the way, these North Star pillars, we review at every one of our meetings to ground us in the work. And, and I guess also this slide deck, I'm hoping can be shared with you. There's lots of links and for further reading. And lastly, we were fortunate to enjoy a book as part of the, the committee this year. Babs Kavanaugh, who's here tonight, thank you, alerted us to this incredible work. Babs Kavanaugh, who's here tonight, thank you, alerted us to this incredible work. And we facilitated a book study and, and really were immersed in yet another look at how do, how do we, where do we go from here? The author does a wonderful job of framing, leaning into this work first by creating a safe space. And then, and then moving, moving on from there with other curricular pieces and other pieces. So. All right. And I should point out, thank you, Trustee Cloud and Trustee Jen for attending, I believe, every single meeting this year. Thank you very much. All right. So this year was definitely about building capacity, building awareness over the course of the year. So what did we do? We had a kickoff meeting at Mary Collins on the 24th. Those are all links, by the way, for future reading. And we did a needs assessment. We identified five areas. And we did the classic, where are we at? Where would we like to go? Across those five areas, and I'll highlight those areas in a little bit here. And then we started kind of a regular series of featuring each one of these five areas. We started with food service. Our wonderful new food service director here, Brian Defore. And we also featured Lisa Moore from Ecology to talk about waste management. In February, we shifted to a focus on curriculum where we invited Dr. Kennedy from Sonoma State. And the wonderful Kirsten Franklin, who's also here this evening to talk about curriculum, share frameworks, share resources. We also had a number of students, including our CAPS interns that during that meeting, we had focus groups and we got just, again, you can click on that link there and get so much wonderful information. That's when we held our book study. I'm going to try to move fast because I only had a few. March 2nd, we had an Earth Day panel in with Zoom. Thank you, Dave Fisher, for helping facilitate that. That featured our CAPS interns. We had tremendous turnout for that. And then we were able to squeeze in one last meeting for the year and end of the year reflection and goal setting. And much of that kind of next step proposals that we have for you this evening came out from that meeting. But again, partnership was a huge theme. It's just was such a bright light this year. I want to give a special shout out to the steering committee, which was Babs, Kirsten, Liza, who's I think in Lake Tahoe, and Jenny Stock, who's here this evening from NOAA. And then just again, look at that list of, of partnered organizations, CAPS, again, represented here tonight. Strategic Energy Innovations, Cool Pedaluma, City of Pedaluma, Friends of Pedaluma River, Point Blue, and on and on and on. All right. Quick shout out. We, first time ever, our district applied, we had McNear and Mary Collins both apply to the Green Ribbon Program. And Mary Collins earned a silver award. We'll talk more about that in a little bit, but it's, it's a tremendous honor. They were able to, to receive that award in person at the ceremony. The Claremont Colleges just a few weeks ago. And we are so excited and inspired by this program. We are hoping to apply as a district this coming year. All right. Additional highlights. This one I want to just take a moment to read. We've been invited to be part of a grant with Dr. Jessica Bean at UC Berkeley. Check this out. UC Berkeley Museum of Paleontology and Lawrence Hall of Science based Bay Area Science Project in collaboration with UCSF UC Center for Climate Health and Equity propose a five-year project to design, implement, disseminate integrated health and climate science professional learning and classroom instructional resources for middle school science courses. So they're going for a big grant with a national, it's a National Institute of Humanities, I believe. And they've reserved half of their spots for Pedaluma City Schools teachers. Well, no, in January, it's a tremendous opportunity for us. And, you know, like I mentioned a few times already, just the more we lean into this, the more these opportunities kind of present themselves to us. And so to me, that's a sign we're on the right track. You know, we're really moving in the right direction. So I wanted to highlight that piece. Golden State Pathways, I worked harder than I've maybe ever worked on a grant this year, still recovering. But we found out we were awarded $1.5 million and part of that is to support green pathways and specifically environmental resources, energy and power for our district at both of our comprehensive schools. So we're super excited about that. And again, the work of this particular committee definitely informed that work too. And we wrote in work with CAPS and SEI and other folks. Strong Workforce Program, which we were awarded a million dollars this year for health careers. Their next round is coming up in the fall and they're going to be incentivizing green pathways. So we're definitely looking forward to that as well. We're super excited about the TOSA for NGSS, Next Generation Science Standards. Lee Boyes from, from Pedaluma, and I've already been planting seeds and bugging her about this work too. May 8 Bike to School Day, probably heard about that. We, we worked hard to partner with Safe Streets in Pedaluma. And Safe Routes to Schools to really amplify that. I don't know if you heard, but Pedaluma had more bikes on the streets than any city in the county, almost 300% more than before. So we're gonna, you know, we're hoping to continue amplifying that work. And then we did have a presence at the Cool Pedaluma Expo in the fairgrounds. Was me and Brian Defore and one of our CAPS interns, Pranav, was there representing. That was a super cool event. All right, gonna move, move along here. So three specific areas we'd like to highlight for you. The one is, is a policy. Is there a policy or what is the policy that we need as a district to help develop an action plan? And those, you can see there, the five areas that we started the year with as focus, and we did our needs assessment. Curriculum is professional development, facilities and grounds, community partnerships, messaging and communication and food and nutrition. We were, we came across a board policy is actually what it is from Portland Public Schools, PPS, that is very inspiring. They ratified this in 2022. And just briefly here, the district aims to educate and empower students as leaders in just transition to sustainable city and restorative society. Our goal is for all students to be environmentally literate and understand the connections between their daily actions in the natural world by using community-based learning and civic action as a context for meeting academic goals described in the graduate profile. So we have a lot of that language already, but then really what the document is very specific goals like emissions reduction. Pedaluma, excuse me, Pedaluma, that's another P. Portland Public Schools will reduce its greenhouse gas emissions by 50% by 2030 using the 2018, 2019 school year baseline and reach net zero emissions by 2040. It's about a seven-page document and there's just goal after goal, just getting very specific. The committee feels strongly that that's one of, I think, probably one of our next steps in this work. Again, building on the great resolution that is here, that's very wonderful for us at the district and then getting more specific. So we're not exactly sure what that looks like or how we would go about doing that, but we have a willing partnered team ready to engage in that work. The next one, again, leaning into the Green Ribbon Schools application, which very quickly, two thirds of it is literally and it's chapters of audit, it's energy, it's waste. What are we doing with the how much waste we're doing, how much energy we're using? So you'll hear from the CAPS interns here, which are really going, have in many ways really laid the foundation for that. And then the third chapter, third and final chapter of the application is, is the curricular piece. We learned that the city of Pedaluma apparently makes every decision through the lens of climate action. That was powerful for us to learn that. And we thought, wow, what if we're just, you step inside the city limits and this is Pedaluma, this is just how we do it. We also love the idea of a land stewardship model. We think we might be the largest landowner as a district in the entire city. What does that look like to move towards a land stewardship model? What kinds of steps can we take to move in that direction? So there's the deadline. And again, it's Green Ribbon's pushing us for systems thinking. And last but not least, curriculum and professional development. We, the committee feels that we're really poised to take the next step on the classroom side to move this work forward. Complete coverage was, was spoken. What does that look like? How do we move this forward? Can we consider a stipend, environmental literacy leaders, other kind of school site based champions to move this work forward? Build capacity, professional development, project-based learning, et cetera. And then the committee highlighted a couple of important assembly bills, namely number 185, signed into law in 2022, which was a revision of the Arts Music Instructional Materials Discretionary Block Grant that allowed to use the money for environmental literacy. Actually, that was news to me, so I was interested to learn that. And then, of course, this year, very remarkably, the Assembly passed 285, which essentially mandated climate change education, TK 12, in our schools, starting this fall. So we have a little bit of catch up to do there, but we look, look forward to leaning into that work. All right. Additional focus areas, I won't read them all, you can read them later, but additional audits, I think some additional opportunity with our CAPS interns. Land stewardship study potentially with Point Blue as a partner and more. Invite you to our next meeting. It'll be in September. We're going to focus on transportation. We didn't get to that part this year. Specifically, so we're going to be featuring that with Cool Pedaluma and Safe Routes. And just thank you so much for your support. Thank you for your time. And at this point, I'm going to up to you, yeah, questions or comments? Additional? No problem.
Thanks, Dan. I wanted to follow up on that, one of those last items you mentioned about land stewardship. So I had a great meeting this week with Liz Chamberlain, Dr. Liz Chamberlain. She's at Point Blue. She runs the Roots Program there. Roots is kind of a division that includes Straw. And we were talking about this idea of what if schools could be stewards of their land? And the, she's all over it. And she, and by the way, she's a parent of ours. She has a kid at McNear, one at Pedaluma High, one just graduated Pedaluma High. And, you know, they've been thinking about this and I, and they've been looking for someone to pilot with. And I said, here we are. Here's Pedaluma and, and it builds off of their strengths with Straw. The thing about Straw, maybe a weakness is, you know, the kids go out to the site, they do some great work, they learn, have a great experience, they learn some things. But the steward is still the landowner, it's still the rancher. And the idea with this Roots Program possibly would be, what if our, our students were the stewards of their, of their campuses? And it could be built in, built into that could be an environmental literacy curriculum, K through 12. And she, she, she is all over this and she wants to partner with us and see if this is something that we can get funded and, you know, work and really put Pedaluma out in front of this is how a school district can manage their lands. I mean, there are, like you said, we're, school districts have a lot of land in urban centers and it's, it's a misconception to think that they're not, they're just landscapes, but they could be more than landscapes. It could be habitat, it could be, you know, educational centers. And these are things that students can have their hands in from kindergarten on up.
Thank you for that. I'll definitely follow up on that. And I would say also a hub of sustainability, an exemplar for the city. We have that opportunity as well. Thank you.
And just to tie into land stewardship, I think it could tie in really well with ethnic studies since land stewardship and this whole concept came from the indigenous people. So if there's a way to incorporate that and just keep that in mind when we're talking about land stewardship. Because we, we got ethnic studies, we got climate change education, we got a lot that we're required to do, rightfully so. So just one more way to tie it all together.
That also ties into what I want to say about potentially thinking about adding a piece about environmental racism as well, especially, I mean, we know our schools are so segregated in Pedaluma and so is our, our neighborhoods or where people live. I'm think of Ruth School and it's like the one school that's like on a super busy street and it's our most in need school. And just looking at where the other schools are located and then looking at their, the demographic makeup as well. It might be an interesting thing for this, for the committee and for the students to look at as well.
With that, I think we should move on to our CAPS interns who are very, very patient interns. I'm very excited to hear this presentation.
All right. I have the pleasure of introducing. All right. I'd like to bring up Kirk Ann Taylor, Director of Climate Action Pathways for Schools. Wonderful colleague, met Kirk Ann in Porterville a couple of years ago when we were doing a model school tour and I was unbelievably blown away and that of the student work there, which I think you will be very soon. And ever since then, I wanted to bring CAPS to Pedaluma. So we're so lucky. And, you know, CAPS is very active across the state. They work in seven districts. We're lucky to be one of them. And we just, you know, had to have had an amazing experience with them in only five months. And we look forward to deepening and strengthening our, our relationship in the future. Kirk Ann.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Dan, and thank you trustees and community. A little better. Okay. Well, I'm Kirk Ann Taylor. I'm the Executive Director of Climate Action Pathways for Schools. And it's been a joy and an honor to be in partnership with Pedaluma City Schools this year and to have the incredible opportunity to work with a fabulous group of Pedaluma students who have been helping to support research and really deep thinking around some potential action areas for you all to consider and the district to consider as we move forward. I do want to thank you all for working with us and for your leadership and the community's leadership really on climate action. You really are at the forefront of what's happening in our public schools for climate action in the state. And it's an honor to be able to work with you. And our organization, just as a brief background, is a nonprofit and we're working with school districts to help them advance climate action. But to do so in a way that we're helping students prepare for their future careers. And so the heart of that has been this paid internship program. And I'm going to turn it over now to Veritas, who's going to lead us through a presentation on the work that the, this cohort of students have been doing just in the last five months, very short amount of time. They've dug into two areas, buildings decarbonization and food systems. So you're going to hear what they've learned in the process and their recommendations. And we look forward to your feedback and questions and dialogue and hopefully a productive future partnership with you all as we move into the next academic year. So thank you again. Really appreciate it. Veritas?
Yeah, thank you so much. Just going to move this if you guys don't mind. Okay, welcome, 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 welcome. My name is Veritas. I'm a rising senior at Pedaluma High School. And as you can see in front of you, this is a summary of our work for our first objective about energy usage and building decarbonization. Through much wrangling, we, for each site across the PCS district, identified potential areas of calculated total energy consumption and price for both electricity and natural gas. And singled out sites with values both in price and emissions as a means to signal areas with more pressing needs of improvement. I would also like to note before we move on that we only worked with schools that had solar capability, which is why you may notice that Kennelworth is not contained in any of the studies we utilized throughout this six-month project. Our analysis shows that most sites are performing decently well in terms of electricity consumption compared to the California benchmark. However, it's important to note that this does not imply that these sites are meeting zero net energy standards. Now, while positive, it indicates there is still ample room for improvement, both at an infrastructural and behavioral level. I want to note that we only had 11 months of natural gas data to work with. So for this period, we identified the highest consumers of natural gas given that data, and we did not compare these sites to any specific benchmark. Focusing on electricity costs, we identified the second incurred the high, the expenses during the 2022, 23 fiscal year. For elementary schools, the highest electricity is we're at Pen Grove with costs amounting to $74,000 and McNear $63,000. And for high schools, us and Pedaluma with 376 and $322,000 respectively. These figures highlight the significant cost of electricity in our schools and savings we could achieve through targeted improvements. While our sites are performing okay against state benchmarks, we have identified key areas for further analysis and While our sites are performing okay against state benchmarks, we have identified key areas for further analysis and improvement, which we will cover in a bit. And by, by addressing these areas, we can move closer to zero net energy state, optimize our natural gas and reduce overall, uh, emissions. And then here in front of you is all done electricity cost for each PCS site that we researched. Amounting to a total of almost $825,000. We can see that spikes in high cost come from high schools, particularly. In Petaluma High, which I mentioned previously. And I would like to pass it on to my friend Andy here to talk about the graphs in front of you.
Yeah, so I'm Andy. I'm a rising senior at Casa Grande. And as you can see here in this graph, we can see each site's electricity usage as it correlates to the amount that was paid. Again, high schools use the most electricity. You can also note that across elementary schools, the usage is very similar and low compared to the high schools. Casa Grande and Petaluma High had the highest usage as the two high schools. And of the remaining schools, Petaluma Junior High had the highest electricity usage. Similar trends can be seen in natural gas usage of Casa Grande and Petaluma High, again, having the highest usage. But Petaluma Junior High having higher usage than other non-high school sites. However, this graph is not 100% accurate because again, we only had 11 months of natural gas data available. And Valley Oaks data is also missing. Nevertheless, we believe it is important to show its consumption as. It has a significant contribution to a total amount paid for energy. And next we'll turn it over to Pranav.
Hi, I'm Pranav. I'm also a rising senior at Casa. And here you can see a chart with all the EUIs for each individual school. And EUI stands for energy usage intensity, excuse me. This value is compared to the California benchmark to see how each site is performing in relation to the benchmark. And to see if it is doing better or worse than average. When we calculate the EUI, we also take into account. The square footage of each site so that we can see the energy consumption with relation to size. As we can see, our district is doing fairly well. All of our EUIs are negative, meaning that all of them are doing better than the benchmark. The larger the negative number is, the better the school is doing. We believe that these results are a good signal that PCS can go completely net zero with our carbon emissions. At least for our school buildings.
Hello, I'm Sammy. I graduated from Casa earlier this month. We compiled data from PCS Elementary, Junior High and High Schools. To measure the amount of electricity consumed in kilowatt hours during the fiscal 2022, 23 year. And importantly, the resulting greenhouse gas emissions based on the EPA's greenhouse gas equivalencies. Calculator. As we have already identified, both high schools consume the most electricity. With PCS in total consuming nearly 2 million kilowatt hours of electricity equating. And four metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. Now I know the numbers on the previous page are hard to conceptualize, so I'd like to put them into perspective. For the total PCS district, the 804 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. Equate to over 2 million miles driven by the average gas powered passenger vehicle. Or powering 159 homes with fossil fuel generated electricity for an entire year. Casa Grande High School alone, the largest consumer, uh, consumed 365 metric tons of carbon dioxide. Equivalent, almost 1 million miles driven or powering 72 homes. Now, we previously mentioned Casa had an impressive EUI. However, when you look the raw numbers, Casa consumes nearly half of all PCS electricity consumption. Therefore, while our EUIs give us reason to be optimistic, we still require action and improvement.
So here are some recommendations that we've compiled that we think could help bring down overall electricity usage. Throughout the district. On the infrastructural level, it would be good to create a net zero plan for each school site. And determining the efficiency and usage of all the electrical systems and systems that utilize electricity. Would also be helpful. So we could pinpoint our energy usage at each school site. On an educational level, we could conduct surveys so we can see how to make students and staff more aware about. The energy they are using and how they can increase their mindfulness and be more aware about their energy usage.
Uh, okay. Objective number two. Getting into our second objective relating to specifically food packaging and identifying feasible alternatives to the current. Petroleum based products realized by the Food and Nutrition Services. Our approach began with a research period in order to understand the life cycle of petroleum based single use plastics. This knowledge is crucial as it highlights the environmental impact of these materials, uh, all the way from production to disposal. Next, we revised, or wait, yes, next we revise the list of items currently procured by Food and Nutrition Services. This step was essential to understand what products we're using and where we make, uh, sustainable substitutes. Then conduct extensive research on bio-based alternatives for food containers and wraps. I'd focus on identifying options that are free of petroleum, have a low carbon footprint and emit little to no greenhouse gases if they end up in a landfill. This ensures that our choices are not only better for the environment, but also viable for waste management. To gain practical insights, we interviewed a waste manager specialist from Recology. This interview provided us with valuable information on the feasibility and effectiveness of different bio-based materials. In a real world, uh, management context. Through this process, we identified several bio-based items, materials and companies. That are suitable for the Food and Nutrition Services. These alternatives not only meet our environmental criteria, but all are also practical for everyday use in our food services.
Hi, I'm Emily. I just graduated from Casa as well, and I will be talking about the bio-based plastic revolution. There's still a huge conflict between whether or not people actually want to buy these alternatives. Because they do not believe that bio-based products are better than petroleum based ones. This conflict has a lot to do with waste management facilities for they claim they cannot take products labeled compostable or biodegradable. In the green waste bins, um, qualities that bio-based plastics naturally possess. This causes people to think that purchasing these alternatives does not make a difference because they end up in landfills anyways. However, it's very important to highlight the various ways in which the bio-based alternatives are better than petroleum based ones. Even if they do eventually also end up in landfills. When created, bio-alternatives produce little to no greenhouse gases, which could not be said about petroleum based products. When breaking down, the alternatives are better because they do not contribute to the microplastic and chemical crises. So even if waste management facilities cannot take the alternatives as green waste. It's still so much better to purchase them as their creation and decomposition is much cleaner. Later, we will be sharing a few studies that corroborate this message. And it's important to note that all of our alternatives, companies and materials have complete transparency. Allowing consumers like us to fully understand their impacts or lack thereof on the environment.
Okay, here, uh, is a complete list of our findings on feasible alternatives to petroleum based items for our Food and Nutrition Services. Focusing on various companies and the bio-based materials they offer, the list is made up of a well-versed variety of choices. For example, you can go with World Centric, which offers a range of bamboo and fiber cutlery, fiber clamshells, plates. PLA cups, lids and salad bowl, uh, bowls, or maybe you can go to Compostic, which specializes in compostable resealable bags and cling wrap. Which offer sustainable alternative for food storage and package, packaging. Now, this is obviously not everything that is available. However, through our research, we have found these to be more than acceptable substitutes. To what we are currently using in our school district. Before I talk about World Centric, I'd like to highlight my colleague's work by emphasizing the importance of bio-based alternatives. EPA did a study that found that 61% of greenhouse gas emissions from plastic. Comes solely from their production. Therefore, even if our local composting facility does not take these bio-based alternatives. Transitioning to these alternatives still massively reduces the greenhouse gas emissions linked to our PCS district. Now, looking at World Centric, which is headquartered locally in Roanoke Park and boasts several impressive certifications. Corroborating their sustainability and safety and is importantly FDA approved. So their, their products are composed of bamboo fiber and PLA or polylactic acid. Now, I know that may sound like an intimidating chemical from a high school chemistry class. But really it's, it's derived from renewable resources like cornstarch, tapioca roots or sugarcane. And therefore requires zero petroleum. Notably, the manufacturing process of PLA produces 75% fewer greenhouse gas emissions. It uses 50% less non-renewable energy than traditional polymers like PET and polystyrene. And is technically compostable in commercial composting facilities. Now their products range from cutlery to clamshells, plates, cups, lids and even salad bowls.
Another company that we researched is called Compost. They are not based as locally. They're from New Zealand, but they. Also boast many certifications such as certified non-toxic, non-GMO and BPA free, which are all very important when working in a school environment. This product is 100% petroleum free, so no components contain any materials made from fossil fuels. We recommend their cling wrap and their, uh, resealable bags because things like plastic wrap and Ziploc are very difficult to find alternatives for. So I think that we found some viable options. They're composed of three biopolymers, um, such as PBAT and PLA. Like Sammy said, sugarcane. Other biopolymers were not mentioned on their site. Compostic makes resealable bags and cling wrap, both of which are compostable. They break down in 12 to 24 weeks, which is faster than an orange peel. And they can be found on sites like Amazon. The cling wrap features perforations instead of a plastic cutter to ensure that there is no petroleum involved. And they come in a variety of sizes, just as the resealable bags. And the resealable bags can even be reused for up to a year if the consumer would like to wash and reuse them.
So similar to the previous two companies, Nature Works produces a plastic that is, uh, has varieties certifications. And is, and is made out PLA. And they obtain the sugars required to make PLA from field core primarily. So NGO, so Nature Works aside, so NGO is, needs to go to a commercial composting facility to properly decompose. But Nature Works decided to answer the question, what would happen if NGO ended up in landfill? So they did an extensive study on what would happen and they did two, they ran two tests. One was under ideal landfill conditions where they compared different humidity levels. And then one was under anaerobic conditions. So in both cases, the PLA didn't really decompose much, but that is simply because in landfill conditions. Nothing can decompose. In fact, both the tests compared, um, compared the decomposition to an oak leaf as well. And in fact, the oak leaf decomposed less than the PLA sample. However, in the anaerobic conditions, the PLA sample did decompose. I believe 36%. And when it did decompose, it produced significantly less methane than traditional plastics. And methane is significantly more harmful to, to the environment compared to CO2. And it's easy one, one of the, uh, most harmful greenhouse gases. Yeah, biopolice plastics. All right. And thank you for listening to our presentation. And if you have any questions, please ask them now.
I can pass the mic along if you have questions for anyone. Um, and I also wanted to say, um, great job. Thank you all. So if you have any questions, please let us know.
That was fantastic. You all answered so many of the questions that would have come to mind. The only thing I might. Add in the future is almost like you talked about electricity usage per the size of the school. But maybe doing per capita based on the amount of students and staff. Because then I think you might see that maybe Casas actually is lower per person than Petaluma. Not that that's better or worse, just another way to look at it. Like, that's just how my brain works. Um, and then my other question. I want to know where the people that just graduated, what you're, what you're doing next year.
I really just forgot to introduce myself. Uh, I'm Camille, but everyone calls me Cammy. And I'm planning on going to UC Davis in the fall to study wildlife, fish and conservation biology.
Um, I will be going to the University of Oregon's Honors College to do environmental science, which is not a shocker after what we just did.
I will be studying human developmental and regenerative biology at Harvard in the fall.
So I was just wondering for those, uh, I'll get to you guys later, but, um, for those that have graduated and, and. Have a, a major in mind, did this project really change what you were thinking about before? Did it reinforce it? Um, did, I mean, I'm just wondering how, what the impact in terms of your future plans. Oh, I could ask that for all of you, actually.
Yeah, I can talk about that a little bit. So a majority of this internship revolved. Analysis, a lot with spreadsheets and calculations. And as someone who's very interested in science, that reinforced my love of. The discovery of, and linking trends due to numerical analysis. And of course I will, uh, carry on as I explore biology in the future.
So I've been planning on studying my major for a while and that's mostly due to the unique programs offered at Casa, including gardening and nursing management. And, uh, the United Anglers at Casa Grande and the environmental conservation class. But, um, usually when people think of biologist positions, they think of all the field aspects of it, like going out and taking samples and whatnot. And that's what I was always looking forward to, but you gotta remember that. I remember, um, going to the Warm Springs Hatchery and talking to one of the hatchery technicians there, which is ideally what I want to do. They were like, it's a lot of desk work. And I think this, um, internship gave me a lot of, a lot of good experience regarding that work. Including like, um, analysis of data and simply organizing it and whatnot.
Um, yeah, I agree with Cammy. I was also part of the Anglers program and I love fieldwork and just PH samples. And like actually seeing your work happening in the field, but it's also so important to get back to the roots and learn about. Data and research papers and extending what you know to those who did not have the opportunity to learn it in that way. And I think this was really important for that, to do outreach, because a lot of people do not understand the tangible impact and being able to. Share your discovery, not just kind of in a niche position, but to everybody is really important.
Well, here's what I'll say. I, um, throughout my life, I've always been a, a huge lover of, of, you know, computers and machine learning. And AI and things like that. And I, I have a, I even wrote a book utilizing it to, uh, analyze a children's book I used to enjoy. So I've seen firsthand how powerful this can be. And even that was like years ago and it's only going up from here. So being able to integrate myself into such a contemporary and serious topic like climate change has, has definitely educated me. On the possibilities of integrating things like, uh, machines and things like that into improving the world. Through even something as, as, you know, whimsical as climate change, as someone may say like, oh, you know, you can't use computers to solve that. And well, I'll respectfully disagree because I think even things like this, there's, there's ways we can always solve it. And I, I think having a positive outlook. On the potential for, uh, good change is very important. And so I was glad I did this. I was glad I met these amazing people and was able to work with them. And, yeah.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing for me was just like, you know, working with all these other people and seeing how like this collaborative work can come together. To create like projects like this. Cause I don't think like any single person could have gone through all of that data and done all of that work. But together, you know, together we've been able to do that. So I think that's the biggest thing I took away from this.
For me, I think the biggest takeaway was it was just an amazing experience to kind of see it from the start, how we were just looking at the spreadsheets and analyzing the data. And then it was really cool to see everything come together with everyone's work and everyone's different input and ideas. And it was just an amazing experience, and it helped me grow as a person.
To acknowledge earlier that my colleague, Dr. Stephanie Payan, is not here tonight, but she's been doing the leading the internship work with the students. So I want to acknowledge her work and to.
I also just want to acknowledge, before we go into more questions, acknowledge and recognize Brian Dufour, our Foods director, who's here in the back busily taking notes on this, on this work and been working, you know, working as part of this process as well. Thank you, Brian.
I don't really have a question. I just, I was very impressed by your presentation. And listening to you guys gives me hope for our world. And for that, I thank you.
Yeah, I more have a comment along the lines of Ellen. I went to a conference last week at UC Berkeley. And it was Equity and Justice Summit, but it was talking about co creating with students and really bringing in student voice. And this is like the perfect example. I'm like, oh, like, these are actually like simple solutions. Let me go on Amazon and get some compostic and like, yeah, I just feel like you just made it seem just very viable and possible. And then also just seeing how much our consumption is and putting it into terms of miles driven and houses powered. So thank you. Great job.
This was very impressive. I think Brian and Amanda owe you a part of their paychecks because you've done a lot of research in their fields that's going to inform. Yeah. But I say this seriously, in my day job, I'm a professor at a university and one of the classes I teach is environmental policy. You guys are doing college level work. I just want to tell you that. And and you're doing it as as high schoolers. And so this is very impressive. I did have a question. Sam, I think you mentioned you equated our energy consumption to carbon equivalents. Does that carbon equivalents account for the portfolio of energy source that we currently have? Because we've got a lot of solar generated power here.
Not no.
Yeah, so that's something for us to figure out.
I did mention that we only analyze schools that did have carbon or excuse me, solar capabilities on site. And so I would hopefully correctly assume that all of our data took into account that and everything we gave was made only with what we were given and what we received from the district and different organizations. So I couldn't one hundred percent tell you if that's true, but we only worked with schools that had solar capabilities. So I would hope that that was integrated into the analysis process.
Yeah, that would be a good follow up question, just based on our ability to capture solar. If we were, if we were measuring off of what we were buying from Sonoma Clean Power or PG&E or whoever, who it is, I hope it's Sonoma Clean Power, then it, yeah, it's not accounting for the solar that is captured and is going directly into things. And that's net metering is a whole other thing, and the CPUC can buy me. Currently, we have to, every, all the solar that we do create that we don't use, PG&E buys it from us for pennies on the dollar. And then even if we use it at the same school site, we have to buy it back for that like full dollar. So write to the CPUC and tell them that is expletive word that I'm not allowed to say. But seriously, thank you all for this. This is super, super impressive. We're so excited to see what you all do next.
Are you going to continue next year, those of you that have not graduated? Or is that, have you, has that been discussed?
If they pay me. Yeah, I definitely plan on four hundred and fifty, I'd say, per week, you know. No, I weekly, weekly, it was on average, probably maybe three, four hours max. Been a very draining task, but it was nonetheless very enjoyable. I definitely plan on doing it next year. I don't know about these two, but.
Yeah, I think I'll also be continuing this, like three, four hours total? Or you meant per week, right?
Yeah, per week.
Yeah. It was for me, I think it was more of like a sliding scale, like some weeks were a little more and some weeks were a little less. But I I plan on continuing next year if the opportunity is available. Yeah.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Come back and tell us how you're doing.
Yes. Thank you all for coming in on your summer break. And speaking of people here on their summer break, can we do, I know people are are antsy, but I know our TK folks have been waiting, so I want to go into our TK curriculum presentation.
All right, that is me. Yeah, I know. But I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide some updates on the TK timeline and adoption process that the transitional kindergarten staff went through. And and just to acknowledge some of the staff that are here to help answer any questions and to elaborate and clarify anything that I might get wrong. Kelly Wood and Rena Salazar and Freya Sharp, thank you for for being here and spending the your summer at a board meeting. So in 2010, you might recall that California passed the Kindergarten Readiness Act, which essentially, up until then, essentially allowed students who were who turned five by December second to start kindergarten. But in 2012, that law kind of changed that, and students had to be five years old by September first, which left about a hundred thousand potential kindergartners out without any kind of schooling. So the transitional kindergarten really came about after that. And it really became a stepping stone between preschool and kindergarten, often viewed as that first year of a two year kindergarten experience. And of course, the importance of TK is to build that strong foundation to prepare students for success. Families have additional options to ensure their children can enter kindergarten with maturity, competence, skills they need to excel. Schools benefited because children would be better prepared to succeed academically and less likely to be placed in special education or held back in later grades. So it really was that building that foundation for for students. So when we look at the adoption timeline, looking at the weeks of January twenty ninth, the TK grade level meetings, discussions began and discussions around next steps and a piloting and list of the teachers that were a part of that is there. During the week of February twelfth, the committee curriculum reviewed the piloting curriculum review by the piloting teachers. And what was reviewed was the creative curriculum publishers were the teaching strategies of twenty twenty two. And I think that was also in Spanish and English. Frog Street and Three Cheers were the three curriculums that they were reviewing. And the committee selected Frog Street and Three Cheers of what they would be piloting. So they spent the next four weeks piloting between March and May, they spent the next four weeks piloting those two curriculums. And then afterwards, the the committee reflected, went through a process and reflected, I believe there was a form they went through. It's, I believe, did a very thorough and great job really reviewing and spending the time to really reflect on both those publishers. And from that, the TK grade level collaboration and recommendations were made, and they chose Frog Street. And Frog Street is an integrated curriculum. And through a theme based of unit of study, Frog Street focuses on every subject, including gross fine motor skills, steam and and social emotional learning. So at this point, the next steps is going through the adoption of the curriculum, preparing for professional development in August, and then of course, implementation in the fall. I know that the year rounds are kind of late with that, so there'll be some challenges really helping the year round schools prepare for that. And I'd like to invite any of the teachers, if there's anything you would like to add, elaborate, or state any challenges that you think are ahead of us, things that we need to kind of prepare for, things that we can do to support.
Feel free, let daddy come up. We have, we have Kelly Wood, we have Freya, we've got Rena. Come on up. Any thoughts, sir?
Well, we have a really great TK team, and we love each other. And we're like, we're like the best. We love the little, we love what we do. And we really wanted to have something that we could collaborate on and work together. So we were not all doing different things at each site, because some of the sites is only one TK teacher. And so when we meet, it's like a party, it's a big celebration. And so we just really want something that we can all work on together, text and email and call and just try and hide how did that lesson go? And did you try this? And so it'll really be good for us to have something that y'all have the same.
And the integrated part of that TK curriculum is really important, plus it's early taught the teachers to having a theme based unit of study as opposed to pulling from like wonders, nothing else, science and social studies for four year olds is kind of challenging. So they're incorporated in themes that are really meaningful to them across the year and space.
Tell us something about what stood out about this curriculum that you're excited about.
This one, really, Kristi and I piloted this one and Rena piloted the three cheers for pre K. But we were a part of the conversations with the publishers for both of them. And the Frog Street had a really big social emotional piece that we loved and knowing that four year olds, that's what they're learning, right? When they come into school, just the morning meeting and the way that they interact with each other each day and share social emotional learning was great compared to this other one.
It was a little thin. We felt like it didn't quite have as many, it was, it was fine, it was good, but it didn't have as many components that the Frog, like the Frog Street, also navigating the online portion, because if we're at home with our laptop and we want to look at something, we don't have the teacher manual, which those can be cumbersome to take home. And it just felt like it was a little bit tricky to navigate on the three cheers. And we felt like the Frog Street was a little bit smoother to get on and off, you know, finding things.
Yeah, lots of links to music and lots of movement activities as well that you could just really get to right away.
And the Frog, I'll speak for Kristi, she's not here. The Frog Street goes really well with PBIS. You get to like focus on something when you come in. And Kristi told a little story about one of, one of the boys I had that went over to develop the strategic issues here. And he said, I'm going to focus on responsibility because I'm going to be responsible to give everyone a hug.
My only question, it seems like I already know the answer. This was a relatively unanimous decision. We're not going to have Cherry Valley come and then Grant come and be like, you guys didn't listen to us.
Yeah, no, we all worked together. Yeah, Kristi and Rena and I were the disgusting team in terms of what we felt would be best. We know each other so well, too. It was really easy. But then we got back together again at the end of the pilot, and then talked and shared why we were choosing this and not that. And we said, sounds great.
Perfect. Yeah, bring in the frogs. Any other questions or comments?
I just think I'm really glad that that you, that this was a decision that you made and that, you know, you're all going to be doing the same thing. I just really appreciate that. I wish that we had that. And I mean, not, not like rubber stamp, you all have your own way of dealing with it, but that, you know, there's a continuity there.
Yes.
And I just think, yeah, so cute. I want to see that frog.
I also really appreciate your collaboration. I mean, it's wonderful when like minded teachers get together that are all teaching the same thing and you can collaborate and come to agreements. It's beautiful to see.
You should see our group text.
I'll bet it does.
Is that Friday night? Kelly, Rena, and Freya, thank you so much for coming in. Board members, you're going to see this under contracts under and under the consent agenda. So.
With that, I think I'm going to adjourn us for five minutes, people. Seven fifty two, please be back. Perfect. I'm reconvening this meeting at seven fifty four, not seven fifty two. Naughty trustees. You, Ellen would like the record to reflect that she was on time. All right, now we'll move on to the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget presentation.
All right, thank you so much. I'll talk fast. I won't. Tonight, I will be providing an update on our progress towards a fiscal year twenty five budget and LCAP presentation and the upcoming public hearing scheduled for next week. This update will highlight our current status in the process in key milestones. Under Education Code four two one two seven, school districts are required to submit a comprehensive budget for the upcoming fiscal year and two subsequent fiscal years by July first. This budget submission is critical for ensuring financial stability and alignment with educational goals. The current budget projections are based on the most recent assumptions provided in the May revise, which reflects updates and adjustments in the state funding and financial forecasts. In tandem with the budget process, school districts must also develop and update the Local Control and Accountability Plan, also known as the LCAP. The LCAP is a strategic three year plan to improve student outcomes by setting specific goals and detailing the actions and expenditures required to achieve these goals. For fiscal year twenty five, a new LCAP must be developed, marking the start of a fresh three year planning cycle. The educational services and business departments have been collaborating closely to ensure that the financial resources are effectively utilized to meet educational objectives. Our efforts focus on aligning supplemental funds with the improvement goals outlined in the LCAP. This collaborative approach has helped us ensure that budget allocations directly support targeted educational improvements, particularly for underserved student populations. So what we found with working together to combine the LCAP and the budget for next year, starting a three year cycle, is that Lindsay Tony and I really had to work backwards from the last LCAP and budget adoption in order to create a new living document. That is one of the things that we've been trying to work out and updating our supplemental funding. You know, for a whole year, I've been talking about the the cuts that we need to make, we need to do this. And we worked really hard to take all of the extras out of our budget. And where we found ourselves a week ago is once we took everything that was in the old LCAP that was moving forward as a new action or goal, we wanted to ensure that we were using the right funding sources. We also found through the process that historically, there had been some things charged to the LCAP that really don't align with the, what the LCAP should be. So we've been working to move those back into other funding sources. So when we present the budget and the LCAP together, it is a true picture of how we are going to meet the needs of our student populations.
So for example. Like, for example, is there any like thing that you can think of that was not supposed to be in the LCAP that was?
I would say not necessarily what, so when, I'm going to back up to twenty thirteen. When the LCAP first came out, it was this document that along with LCFF funding, everybody was like, you need to put, you need to show that you're spending your LCFF funding, meeting the needs of students. Well, this came after years of historic rollover budgets. So what I will say, when I first became a CBO, I remember going through our financials and saying, okay, we're going to spend twenty five thousand dollars extra on maintenance, and that was allowable. So as the LCAP has developed over the last nine years, really, the allowable expenditures have changed. So. So what we're finding is things that maybe were previous iterations were maybe a gray area. Or now you need to attach to the new LCAP. Oh goodness. How to show that you are meeting the needs, like a metric. You have to tie a metric. So how can you tie a metric to increased maintenance? So it's really that it has truly changed. But what we found from the last iteration. A great example would be when our new communications platform was brought online years ago. And some of our staffing change that has historically been being charged to supplemental funds. There's no way to tie a metric and the argument would be is if you're sending out a communication unless. You are having it specifically translated, the translation would be allowable for supplemental funds. But communicating and the platforms don't necessarily align. So what we've been having to do is we still need all of that, but we needed to change where it's being charged to. So when we bring back the budget and the LCAP, yeah, next month or next week, I promise. Before July 1, I promise. You will see that there's also some changes that I will be discussing with staffing. And really over the LCAP is a new three-year plan. Where we see ourselves in budget year one versus budget, our multi-years two and three. Whereas this is where budget, this is where things are really going to start. Getting kind of tricky over the next years because we're running out of our COVID supplemental restricted funds. I've talked a lot over the last year about how we need to reduce positions. We need to trim our budget. On the flip side of that is we have $7 million of supplemental funds. That need to be used for increased and improved services. Well, pain for power isn't going to do that. So what you see is of the $10 million in our LCAP, roughly 7 million is in salaries. So it's one of those things where as I talk. It feels on one hand, I'm like, we gotta cut, we gotta cut, we gotta cut. And then I'm going to be presenting well, with our supplemental dollars. And it's really just ironing out the uses of these restricted funding sources. That we're going to work over this next year to do a better job of explaining it to the board. That our partners, our educational partners in the community about the true allowable uses of these funds. All right. So what we know, on June 13th, both houses of the legislator, legislation approved AB 107. Which is the Budget Act of 2024, which is our 2425 fiscal year budget. We like to throw as many years as possible into these. And they also approved SB 154, which includes the suspension of proposition 98. For current year fiscal year 2324, along with but other budget related bills. This approval eliminates $870 million from the general fund for school facilities programs. In next fiscal year 2425. So those are all of the transitional kindergarten preschool state matching programs. This is happening because the, we are still anticipating a school bond measure on the November ballot. And this is one way that the governor, they are able to cut our proposition 98 guarantee. And still also bring a bond, which is a later discussion item because it's our favorite topic. Additional budget trailer bills may continue to progress during this session. Meanwhile, there is a push to get AB 247 onto the November ballot. Proposing a $14 billion K through 14. So it will include community schools, facilities bond. So we would love to have a piece of that $14 billion. Which would be in matching funds. So we need to make sure we have funding. Yes. All right. For fiscal year 25, we anticipate a slight decline in enrollment. But expected growth in the subsequent years through our enrollment projections and demographic study. We have been anticipating this. This was a larger senior class. And now with implementation of TK, we are building our enrollment back up. The projected enrollment is 7,095 students. With an average daily attendance or ADA of 6,748 students representing 95% of total enrollment. Over the last few years, we have hovered under 93% in our elementary. So this is, this is, we have a long way to go, but this is huge that we're anticipating our ADA to be roughly 95%. Ideally, we get to a position that we're at 97%. That is when the governor and all of the numbers come out that base. What school districts will be receiving in revenue, it's based on a 97% attendance rate or ADA. That is why sometimes when we receive the actual, actual dollars, they come in lower. Okay. Additionally, our unduplicated pupil percentage for the district is 44.94%. And new for next fiscal year is that San Antonio High School has been identified with the equity multiplier. Got it in one minute. I promise. The local control and funding formula equity multiplier provides extra funding to local educational agencies. For school sites that meet specific criteria related to student. It's around non-stability and socio-economically disadvantaged from the previous year. This funding is intended to support evidence-based services and improvements for students at those specific school sites. Starting with the 2425 school year, LEAs must document their efforts to improve outcomes for these students. As part of the LCAP and you will see when we bring the LCAP forward, we have a new goal five, which is specific to the equity. Multiplier for San Antonio. And what I want to point out is when this, when we first started hearing about this, you heard a lot about the socio-economically disadvantaged population. Which San Antonio is not one of our highest schools. It's far from, from. We actually expected a couple of our elementary schools to qualify. But the key piece that we wasn't, we didn't know about in the beginning was the, the student non-stability. So it makes sense that one of our continuation programs would have non-stability within the program. One of the great things we do at our elementary schools is that we keep our students. So more to come on equity multiplier as we go through the year and we learn more about it. All of these project, projections and metrics are critical for budget planning and ensuring effective resource allocation to meet our student needs. The local control and accountability plan is a three-year strategic plan that outlines goals, actions, services and spending. To improve student outcomes based on state and local priorities. It allows educational agencies like county offices, school districts and charter schools to explain their decisions. On programs and services tailored to local needs. So I think this is one of our goals for moving forward as we start presenting the budget in conjunction. With the LCAP is really outlining not only the goals and actions in the LCAP, but tying them to specific metrics within our budget. The developing and updating this plan supports strategic planning that links budget decisions to student performance data. It's essential for agencies to engage with partners to reflect community insights and needs. Ensuring goals are set and met inclusively. Accountability requires agencies to show improvement for foster youth, English learners and low income students. Aligning with our funding priorities to ensure compliance with educational standards. And I would like to point out, we often talk about our socio-economically disadvantaged students. It is our foster youth homeless, English learners and low income families. Our special ed students are not included in that count, though you see a lot in conjunction. We receive separate funding for them. And so often they kind of get, all of those students get grouped in together when we're talking a lot about specific things. But for purposes of our funding, those are the student populations. Yes. Yep. Okay. So this is our anticipated LC, see I got ahead of myself. This was not what I was supposed to be talking about. So you'll see a slide that's going to make sense in two slides from now. For our LCFF entitlement, we're anticipating just over $89 million PCS district wide. And the adjusted base is, includes the COLA and the additional add-ons are our grade span adjustments. So we receive additional funding for TK through third and something eighth and ninth through 12th grade. And our supplemental, which is the amount of money that is truly tied to our increased and improved services in our LCAP. Is just over $7 million, though you'll see that we do our LCAP as a whole is more than supplemental. Okay. So all of the things I said about the LCAP went with this slide. I won't say it again. But this just breaks down the three main components of the LCAP planning process. Comprehensive strategic planning, meaningful engagement and accountability and compliance. So this is just a quick snapshot of our 24 through 27 LCAP goal expenditures broken down by goal. The amounts are our total expenditures for the goal. And then the contributing actions expenditures, those are supplemental dollars. So we will have contributing actions in goal one, goal two and goal four. The reason why there is not for goal three is that is for our students with disabilities. And goal five is our equity multiplier. The road ahead. So next Tuesday, June 25th at 6:00 PM. We will present the budget and the LCAP in hold of public hearing. We will then come back on Wednesday, the 26th at 4:00 PM. Hopefully to adopt the budget and LCAP. If approved, we will submit that to the county office of education on Thursday, the 27th. The state should enact the budget, will enact the budget by June 30th. And we will have 45 days after the state budget to determine if we need to do what we call a 45-day budget revision. At this point, we're not anticipating anything. We're not anticipating anything that will. Yes, that will be a material difference unless there is some magic one-time funding that we will not say no to. So, but right now we're not anticipating any of our expected revenues to go down with the enacted budget. All right. Questions?
This is, thank you. And this is just the state budget. I need to remind myself title one isn't in here. And your talk about the equity, I mean, the multiplier made me think about title one. And I was just curious, the 44% unduplicated count. Are, this is, this is a title one question. Are, are they concentrated in sites where any, which of our schools are, can qualify as site title one?
So all of our schools that are, that receive title one dollars will be school-wide title one. So McDowell, McKinley, Valley Vista, Sonoma, Carpe Diem, Casa Grande, Kenworth.
Great.
And South County.
San Antonio.
And San Antonio.
Okay, thank you. I did, sorry, on a separate issue, the bond, you know, the proposed bond. I don't know if, or I guess this is going to be, this is an item. Okay, nevermind. I'll save that question for later.
Just to speak to the unduplicated percentage. The 44% is district wide. Our sites range from our lowest percentage school is 19.84%. And our highest is 89.62%. Yeah, one neighborhood is Maddie's neighborhood and one neighborhood is my neighborhood. Any questions or comments? No, thank you very much. Thank you. All right. And now we will move on to comments from the public, our very patient public. Thank you, public. I just have to read my little thing first and then I'll call you up. Under government code, section 54954, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest. Providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services and/or employees. The district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that a complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something not on the agenda, it will only be heard during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. That is right now. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a three-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter and commenters may not cede their time to others. Dave, are you going to have a timer for me or no? That's okay. That's why I asked. It's all good. I will do the timer, but Bruce, you can come on up to this mic over here.
You should get a job working for the pharmaceutical companies when they do those commercials with the disclaimers.
Pay more than my nonprofit job.
So Maddie, should I bring one of my props up? I think you mentioned that I should bring my props. There we go. Keep it light. So my name is Bruce Hagan. And what do I say about myself here? I passed one of these out. You should all get this. The main reason is there's a QR code. The bottom line here is we're trying to get more better facilities for people to get around in town without having to be in a car. And we're doing a lot of work there and a big part of it is just generating the public will. The unanimity of the value of what these are going to do for people in Petaluma, whether you drive, some of the time, all the time, never. How do we get progress on this? Because we've gone for decades with good ideas, but nothing gets built. So the QR code will take you to a declaration that we're asking people to sign. As individuals, if this body would like to do what it's, what's necessary to approve it as a group, that's even better. I'll tell you just a little bit more here. So I'm a co-founder of this group called Safe Streets Petaluma. I've been in town for 42 years. Three kids graduated from the schools here and I've got a grandchild now in kindergarten at Grant. Whether your concern is climate or personal or public health or the cost of living even. This is probably the most important thing you can do is make it more accessible for people of all ages and abilities, backgrounds, incomes. To get around without a car. So when we formed Safe Streets Petaluma. We just started bringing people in and getting them involved and communicating. Well, certainly the, the task force that you're all aware of now was a result. Maddie kind of got the ball rolling and we, we pestered the city as a group. And we have what we have now, which is just so far a wonderful success. This declaration asks you to support something called complete streets. And that's basically a street that, what did I write? I think I wrote this really well. Meets the needs of all modes of transport for all ages and abilities. And the group that gave us advice on this had this wonderful slogan, we'll have peace on the streets when everyone has a piece of the street. So streets aren't just for going as fast as you can while you're texting or looking at your Facebook feed in a car. But to accommodate all forms of mobility, I used to play baseball in the street. I used to play baseball in the streets when I was growing up. You've seen pictures of streets where they're gathering places, where people meet people and have these quality interactions that make it a healthy vibrant community. So we've asked the city to proceed on this and we've got great support from the city manager, staff and council. Every now and then they run into a situation where they want to do something that's in the interests of the whole town, like have a bike lane.
Twenty seconds.
How much?
Twenty.
Yeah, so if you could take the time, scan this and you'll be doing a good thing for our kids. That goes on the back of my bike.
On the back of his bike.
You will not believe how popular this is with the kids. When I'm riding down the street and I ring my bell. It is too, yeah, yeah, Simo, Simo and the unicorn. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Listening to you all tonight, keep up the good work.
Thank you very much. Can you pass that down to our secretary, Matthew Harris? That's literally his title, he's the secretary to the board, he's also the superintendent, but.
Thank you for coming. Yes, thank you.
All right, moving on to adoption and approval of the agenda, do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
I second.
All in favor? I, I don't know why I'm picking up the gavel, I just got excited to, to start gaveling. All right, we'll move on to report and activities and report on activities and correspondence from school board members. Board trustees attended a pre-bond scoping meeting at Casa Grande High School, the environmental literacy and climate action committee that we just heard about, a meeting with Point Blue Conservation Science about schools as land stewards that we just heard about, a safe routes to schools, task force walk audit of Casa Grande, which we kind of just heard about, the Casa Grande Senior Capstones, the vacation on Mars play at McNear, the Sonoma County Juneteenth Festival and the North Bay Organizing Project's Cultur y Cambio fundraiser. And that's just the non-graduation stuff, give me a second. Trustees attended graduations or promotion for the following PCS schools and programs. Petaluma High, Casa Grande, Carpe Diem, Sonoma Mountain, San Antonio, Adult Education, Petaluma Junior, Kennilworth, PAX, Cherry Valley, Grant, McDowell, McKinley, Pengrove, the Therapeutic Support Program at Casa Grande and the Petaluma Transition Program. We did not make it to all of them, we are very sorry, but we will try even harder next year. We also attended graduations and promotions of loved ones or ourselves at the North Coast School of Education, Corona Creek Elementary School and Orchard View. Yeah, our trust, one of our trustees got her admin, kind of almost. But she had her graduation, as did the spouse of one of our other trustees. Does anyone want to talk about it? Yes, yes. So don't want to talk about any of the graduations or any of the other events?
The transitional program graduation was amazing. Those kids, oh, I cry like you do. So I was in tears, but I was just so, I was so impressed with these kids. I'm, you know, I mean, they're, they have their difficulties, but they, they're funny, they told jokes. They're just, it was, it was a wonderful, wonderful graduation and I was really glad I was able to go.
I will say, having been to one other district's event, I really appreciate how all of our promotions and graduations are really centered on the student. It's not about the adults, it's about the kids. Or the adults for adult ed, I didn't forget you adult ed. It's about the students. They are students.
Even the, the baby students. It was so cute, it was, it was a happening crowd, all those kids, yeah.
All right, so comments from the public on consent items. No public. So we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All right, any questions or comments on any of the items on the consent agenda? Did we ever find Valley Vista's?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Are we gonna have it next time?
We can add it on now or we can add it to the next one if you want to.
I think it should be on the next one. Yeah, can we just squeeze it in there? I think that would be good.
You know.
Go for it.
I love a SIPSA, I mean, I really do, you guys know, it's like my joy, the SIPSA is in the California dashboard are like my things. I am so strange, I really do. And just like reading through, I mean, I know we asked a lot of questions, we talked a lot about, but just like, again, continuing to see it's like almost predictable. Who's, you know, achieving and who's not achieving.
Who's being suspended?
You have the suspension, the chronic absenteeism, and I know that we're going to have someone looking at alternative education. I hope just like, as well as alternative ways of just being, you know, we talked a little about in-school suspension versus out-of-school suspension, what would it look like as a district? Speaking of admin program, I know one of our projects was like to look at alternatives to suspension. And there are districts and schools that have like really robust in-school suspension programs where it's like very structured day after throwing the kids in a room with an adult. Like, okay, eight to nine, we do this, nine to ten, you know, just structured. This is not helping them just to be kicked off of the campus. I'm really hoping we can move forward with the common assessments. I know we talked about this a little over a year from now, looks like the secondary, we still don't have the common assessments. Yeah. That's, that was the main add-ons.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? There she goes.
Not lost yet. The site councils, you know, they have so much to do with how these plans are developed. And I'm just wondering, I think in some cases, you know, they're, they're thoughtfully, you know, brought together, you know, they recruit people or, you know, there's like an outreach of some kind. I feel like in some cases, it's the same people doing it every year. And it's the same volunteers, especially at secondary, because it's so hard to get people to really become involved once their kids are in secondary. And it just seems like I would like to see some kind of a thing from our district that maybe is a plan of action for getting, you know, diversity on the site councils to do outreach to the community for site councils. Because, you know, hearing this today, it really struck me how much they influence the eventual goals. And so the ones that are super invested have really good plans. So anyway, it just struck me, I was on a site council at Petaluma Junior way, twenty five years ago. But it was a very different animal then, we were given a certain amount, it's a little pot of money, that's what it was. And then we decided what, how to spend it. So I don't know, I, that would be a suggestion that I think would be welcome at, at the schools also, because, you know, you know the same people. And if your child is not in the school, maybe not be on the site council.
One, one thing to think about on that note, Maddie, is just the breakdown of the team, right? So you have typically, it's five staff members and five parents, right? So thinking about those, especially given our goals with English learners and students with disabilities. I mean, maybe it's, we want to make sure that we have someone from ELAC or someone with a student with an English learner, student with disability, and then maybe three at large or however we want to break it down, but that could be a, without discriminating against anybody, say, hey, this is a, these are district-wide goals, we want to make sure that our site councils are represented. And I say that with also saying it's very hard to recruit parents.
What I was gonna suggest is use some of the SIPSA money for stipends or even gift cards for the parents or whoever, or staff too, like everybody, you know, even a twenty five dollar.
We can't do a gift cards, but.
Never works, can you turn your mic on?
Parents work. And I mean, I was on South Council, Site Council at Tamalas. And our meeting started at four, which was kind of the latest we wanted to start them, and it still precluded a lot of parents, especially REL parents had a really hard time coming to those.
So one of the requirements when developing a school site council is, you, you know, depending on the demographics of the school, there needs to be an equal representation in the, in the council, but also this, the, the school needs to adjust their time to meet the needs of families. So sometimes they can start the meetings in the morning, sometimes after school, sometimes later. But they need to accommodate for families that are working or families that have other busy schedules. So those are requirements under developing of the school site council.
And maybe if it doesn't have to, I mean, theoretically it would be great to be on the school site that you're talking about. But if there's a way to work with the adult school so that there's like childcare for the site council meetings, you know, even if I'm talking about Casa Grande, if I'm meeting at the adult school or somewhere else, I don't mean to volunteer the adult school for more things, but if we have these childcare things built in.
And that's allowable use of title one funds to do that.
There we go.
Absolutely, they, they should have it.
Yes.
I mean, because the reality is we're not seeing the improvement that we want to. And so, what's that saying?
And we're not seeing the SIPSA's change dramatically from year to year. It's one thing if they, yes, if, if they were trying multiple new things and still having the same problem, then it's like, okay, mate. But to have very similar plans year after year, it's been five years, we're, we're getting tired.
Well, and then the ones, the ones that were, I was like, literally cheering and texting Caitlin, like, oh my gosh, look at this, look at this.
Yes.
Sorry. No, go ahead.
No, I just say there, there, there is a template. What happens in a lot of SIPSA's and all the districts I've been in is oftentimes they, they come off very myopic and because there is a lack of systems understanding. If we, we can, we can address, they can find actions and goals to address ELs. But when, when they address, when they create actions absent of a system, it doesn't really hold sustainable results. You might find bounces or, or, you know, some changes that happen, but it's, it's oftentimes either insignificant or it just happened because they don't know why. When we talk about systems, we talk about accountability and the question, and what, what you'll see in many of the SIPSA's and even sometimes LCAPs, is there's no accountability system. What are we measuring our students against to know that they're actually making progress? When we say we want to serve our students who are farthest from justice, what does justice look like? So that we know that all kids are actually achieving it. And if we can't define that, then it's hard to know whatever actions we're putting in place is actually making an impact. So the challenge with systems is that it takes time to build. But once it is built, then we can measure more accurately what is actually working and not working, adjust those actions or eliminate them, and then or add in new actions that we know are impacting the system, because the system should be measuring exactly how those kids are, we've defined it, we know what it is. But if we do, we do anything outside of something that's absent, we'll always have the same results because we don't have a clear way of really knowing how, what we're actually measuring, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, ideas, silver bullets? All right, here none, I call the question, the vote on the consent agenda, all in favor? Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, consent agenda passes. Moving on to comments from the public on action items, I still have no public. So I'm going to move on to our only action item, how is that possible? Yes, approval of the contracts for the acting superintendents and addendums to the superintendent and assistant superintendent contracts. It's under business services, but I'll let whoever wants to take it can take it, yeah. Sorry, can I, can someone make a motion first?
I move to approve the contracts.
I second.
All right, now.
Thank you, tonight we bring forward four contracts for your approval. The first is an addendum to Superintendent Harris's contract. Adjustments reflect the unpaid leave of point eight FTE from September first through June, June thirtieth and limited capacity work for thirty six days during the ten-month leave period. We also bring forward Assistant Superintendent Tony, Tony Huwa's contract, promotion to Deputy Superintendent and addition of a one-time ten thousand dollar stipend for the twenty four, twenty five school year only. I also bring forward new contracts for the two acting superintendents that will serve in the twenty four, twenty five school year. Overall, there will be a cost savings to the district of thirty three thousand dollars with this plan.
Any comments or questions? You look like you have a comment or question, no.
So sad.
Yeah, it's gonna be a big change for the district, but.
I will just say that we're working on, we're still, as, you know, as, as you got the chance to meet with Luanne Esmeralda Day, working on a schedule to best possible way that we can to support the district through next year. And yeah, we are, we're, we're gonna do everything we possibly can to make sure that the district is in great hands and, and come back and ready to, ready to go, so.
I feel very positive about the two, two soups and I think it'll be fine, we will miss you very much.
And Matthew, why don't you be an example to everyone about putting your mental health and your family first and just like, just being just so amazing over the past, it's been three years already, past three years and leaving the district in a place where Tony can step in with Esmeralda and Luanne, so yeah, appreciate you.
Three years in this position, twelve years in the district.
All right. All right, I call the question, these contracts, all in favor? Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, the four contract or the three, two contracts and two addendums to contracts are approved.
Before we move forward, there's been some question on when Tony will act as deputy superintendent. So we have a gift for him to make it very clear to the public.
Let's see. Oh, yes.
So when he wears it, we'll know to ask him.
Yes. That's perfect.
You gotta wear that to McClin talks on our next outing, yeah.
That's amazing. All right, comments from the public on discussion and information items. No public still, they don't really come bursting through the doors at eight thirty eight PM usually. So on to the actual discussion information items. Our first one is under admin and human resources, it's about board member professional development, Matthew, do you want to?
And I think this one, just, I, I wanted to, to, to share this publicly and as transparent as we possibly can be. And to make sure that we're, we're, that I'm organizing this with, that it's the will of the board, how we organize these. So the first, the first question around here is CSBA, so we know that CSBA is happening in December. And I believe that everyone is planning to attend CSBA, now, who, who's planning to attend CSBA? Or is no one planning to attend? Two people? Okay, two.
I haven't made up my mind yet.
Okay. Sure, okay, so two or three people. And then, and then the other question I have is Caitlin, Maddie and I went, we, we attended the CSBA Equity, right, work that is we kind of directed by the, the group. And one thing that came out of that, and feel free to jump in, Caitlin and Maddie, was the, the importance of, of, you know, as a, as a, as a governing team, governance team, creating an equity statement, and there's, there's actually, it's multi, multi-year work that goes along with it. But really creating the statement from the top of the organization to say, this is what we believe and this is what we want all of our leaders to share in. And so my question really around this, the work on professional development is, do we, and I'm really, I'm really thinking about that, the, you know, the governance training in July. do we, and I'm really, I'm really thinking about that, the, you know, the governance training in July work. Do we want to bring, do you want to bring in a, um, someone like, and it could, and here's where we, we can go a couple of different ways. We could bring the CS, one of the CSB presenters that we worked with during the training. I'm sure they would love to come and work with PCS board. We could also work with someone like Anthony Nicole King. The benefit there is there's a through line to professional development and work already that's happening in our district and sort of for them to say, oh, here's what the board is saying, statements and the work that they're doing. And so as we do professional developments, we're going to include this in the work. But they could do that either, they, they could do that either way. So I guess my question for you guys is, is that something that we're interested in? You want me to pursue that? Setting that up for this July? Do we want to wait a year? I just wanted to have a conversation together.
Are we doing any work with 21 CSLA? It's free. And it's equity coaching for leaders.
We are, yes. Jason.
I wonder if we could get one of the coaches or a consultant. I don't know. Cause it's summer and it's a free resource.
It is, it's typically, so the 21 CSLA is typically, we're using the, a lot of the coaches, right? So with our administrators, all of our administrators have thank, you know, thanks to that generous resource and grant that SCO received, we are, we have placed a coach, I believe, I believe with every single one of our principals.
The vast majority.
The majority of them, because So the majority of them, some of our, we have a few principals that actually had a lot of experience. Most of them are new. So all of our new newer principal, newer principals. We set up coaches.
But even, even some of our experienced principals.
Some of them, but not all of them. There are a couple that we didn't, but almost, almost every single one.
So I guess the point is that, that's sort of what I thought that, that grant was for. It's not our grant, it's from, it's SCO, right? And they've been helping us place, but I don't know.
They're just the lead, but they have a lot of free equity resources. I don't know if they, I mean, they did talk a lot about that summit I just attended about helping folks build like an equity plan. I could get more information and pass it on to you as you start looking, of course, at other resources as well, just in case. Merrill May.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I'll send you her info.
So we can look at that. I guess the question is, do we want to go with that resource and see, maybe it is free. I don't know. I, I, I didn't even think about that one.
Always, yes, the free. Well, not always, but like if the free resource is good, let's go with the free resource.
It's very, it's like millions of dollars grant. So like these folks are getting paid. Just district. To pay and anyone can access. But I think that could just be one that we avenue we look at as you look at Nicole Henderson, Nicole King, even Sanja Lowery as well.
That's what I was thinking. It should come back.
Sanja was at the this, the equity, CSB thing that we did. So I can, I can, we can explore and see if the SCOs grant will pay for something like this. That would be great. But in the absence of that, do we want to start? I mean, I guess the, the bigger question is we want to start doing this work this July. Great. And then I guess I can work with Caitlin. It sounds like Joanna maybe on, on finding the right provider for this, who's available on that day? Who can help us to, to get this started? Does that sound good?
And Matthew, do you also want to mention like one of the things we discussed in relation to this, the welcoming tools grants from SCO. We also talked about that because they offer.
Oh, yeah.
They offer a two-year program. It's, it's different, but related work. Um, and they offer a two-year program where they do three sessions, the first year, three sessions, the second year. They said they had the capacity to do as many of our staff as we want. And they, one of their things is we just don't want teachers. We want all staff. So teachers and classified staff and administrators. And they also had a piece where they like to do an onboarding training for all of the leadership and they mentioned including the board. So that's something that we also were talking, could be brought in, like we only have the, the time to do so much, but it's, it's another, another free, like a resource from the county that we, we could be also discussing that is related.
And remind me, Jason, the name. Yeah. Mark Niemann. Yeah. Yeah. So we have to look and see what the scope or what, what they provide, but we'll, we'll investigate some of this stuff and come back with a recommendation. Okay?
Perfect. Next, uh, LCAP public hearing dates. Have they changed in the last 10 minutes since Amanda presented?
No, I didn't realize, I didn't realize that Amanda was going to include it in her presentation. So yeah. I wanted to just be super transparent with any public who's watching or want to participate. Tuesday, June 25th, 6:00 PM is when we'll do the, all the presentation. The next day, uh, we looked at Ed Code has to be, it can't be the same day. It didn't say anything about how long. Wednesday, June 26th, 4:00 PM. We will, the board will hopefully accept the, the budget and, and LCAP.
It was, it was the 27th on the calendar. We got it at the beginning of the year, but it's, yeah, I had that town, I had that on my calendar too.
Yeah. So the public hearing will be held at the regular board meeting, adoption at the special board meeting. Wednesday.
So, so that's a question, I guess. There, that was also why I wanted to bring this up because this is the Tuesday, June 25th, 6:00 PM. That's a set date. I mean, that's a regular board meeting. When we accept is a special board meeting. We haven't called a special board meeting yet. And so we were thinking, I think I had asked a couple of board members, would it work to do this on Wednesday, June 26th at 4:00 PM? And I heard, yes, yes, but I want to make sure if that's.
Are you free Ellen?
We haven't called, we haven't called a special board meeting yet, but that's what we were planning on calling. And it should be like a 15 minute meeting?
We don't add anything else less than that.
It shouldn't be a very long meeting. It should just be a, yeah.
And if the public is watching and wants to learn more about the LCAP and get the actual presentation, the Tuesday meeting is the one that's put on your calendar. So 6:00 PM on Tuesday, the 25th, right here where we, where we always are. Well, thank you all. And then moving on to consideration of engaging a consulting firm for a community bonding survey. Oh, community bonding. I love it.
I mean, it sounds a lot nicer when you say community bonding. We want the community to bond over a new facilities bond. So in, um, we've been talking about the possibility of going out for a facilities bond at the November election. As part of that, we've been working with DTA, architecture firm on a bonding capacity, um, plan, which, um, the final plan will be brought forward to the July 23rd meeting. Um, one of the things that we have not discussed as part of this process is if the, if the board would like to go out for a community survey to see the community interest, um, in the amount of bonding capacity. What kind of a polling to see what would pull well, um, with having to make the decision in the next couple of months. We would want to consider doing this soon. Um, so there's time for the, whoever we work with. We have worked with, um, provider in the past over the parcel tax. Um, you can also work with legal firms. So just trying to go, get a little direction on how we should move forward.
But I think the, correct if I'm wrong, but the, the survey would be, it's a different organization. What's, who's the group that?
Godby.
Godby.
Research.
Yeah, they would do the, the polling.
Yes, they did the parcel tax.
The bond, they, they did the survey only, just the survey.
Amanda, what, what's the deadline to get it on the ballot for November?
August 9th. So the goal is right now is to bring everything for your review to our regularly scheduled July 23rd meeting, um, to make the decision. That does give us some additional time, um, until August 9th for a special board meeting if needed.
And again, just to talk about the, the November bond, right? This is, this is a 55% threshold. This would also provide us with, if we, if we do the survey and it comes back every, we're, we're good to move forward with matching funds that we would be needed if the state bond were to go through, which we think it's going to be on the ballot.
Yeah. Um, the other piece of this is depending on what the, how the results come in. It really helps us gauge our capacity of how much, um, community ground stomping we need to do.
And how much fundraising and all of the fun stuff that goes into a campaign. Uh, yeah, we need this, we need this for sure. If they could, if it's possible without too much extra cost. I don't know if there are like two levels of bond that we're looking at. Like I would almost want to see if a lower bond amount would be more palatable, or should we just go for surveying the full? I don't know.
They will look at the historic trends and then also our bonding capacity. We're working with ISAM on what that looks like.
Cool. Thank you.
But to your point, Caitlin, I do think, just like with the parcel life, they look, they look at a, a few different levels and pulling, pulling community members to get a scientifically reliable as close as they can with what, what, you know, what would the community support? And I mean, Amanda, just, Amanda and our architects just finished a marathon trip of all the school sites, trying to engage community members to see, and that would be part of the.
And what kind of things would we put on that we would say we were going to use the bond for?
So we will use the preliminary results. So, um, we had all of the community meetings and then our survey for, um, types of items to be put on the bond, um, closed on last Friday. So we'll use that information to gauge, but I'm going to guess really what we saw, um, from the community was a lot focused around our food service programs. Maintaining our classrooms, our floors, um, security and safety was a really big topic that was brought up so that, um, always athletics. And I think everybody's favorite was, um, the Performing Arts Center. But so, and then what happens is through the bonding, they'll ask questions and it helps us gauge on how to write the bond. So you can use very broad language, um, that encompasses a lot. In tandem with this, we also have our staffing survey out right now, um, for workforce housing. That we're hoping to get more results in, um, that could help with this. During the community, um, meetings, workforce housing, I brought it up on possible projects. And, um, there was, there wasn't a ton, there wasn't really conversation or interest either way. Which actually for workforce housing, I think is really good because sometimes people have very strong opinions on, um, what affects staff. So I thought that that was also very promising.
So there are, and there are, there are big projects like football fields and bleachers and press boxes and second gyms and pools, all these big, big things. But there's also, I mean, what Amanda mentioned, safety, right? When we look at win, window, window tinting in our schools, right? We think about that, we think about, we also just think about thing, just general maintenance. And we have roofs and more windows than you can count. Windows, new windows, um, um, air conditioning, HVAC, all these sort of things that just are the day-to-day things that classroom, you know, what you mentioned, classrooms where, where our students are in, in, going to school, we have to make, we have to keep them updated.
Right. Yeah. I think we need a survey and it'll tell us where the community is at and we'll be able to plan how much we have to campaign and whether that's something we are able to undertake in our free time when we are not district employees or board members. All right. Moving on to future.
Yeah, I got one more. Um, so, um, there's, um, there was a a surprising story, uh, this week about the state's bond measure. The governor's getting threatened with a lawsuit. You know, you're aware of what I'm talking about here, Amanda. This is about, um, the capacities of, um, school districts to access the bond, the state bond measures based upon property wealth. Yeah. So, um, and the, the litigants, you know, have this amazing analysis. I'll share this with everyone here. That shows where bond money has gone historically in California, based upon property value. And it's, it's so dismal. I am sure that these, the litigants are going to get, you know, is going to get something. Get a, um, some kind of, uh, give, uh, by the governor. So anyway, what my question, what I was wondering as reading that is, I don't know where Pedaluma fits on there. Are we a high property value place or a low property? And, uh, you know, the, if, if the litigants get their way, I mean, the, the, the matching funds isn't, you know, if you're on a low side, the matching funds is remarkably generous, like 5% to get 95% or 20% to get 80%. It's, uh, it's wants to completely flip where the bond money has gone in the past. Did you have a sense, Amanda, of where we stand in that?
So we are right on the threshold generally for, um, types of these programs in California, the threshold, um, for what they would call first round high need is above 55%. We're at 49% of our socioeconomically disadvantaged count. Um, one of the key things that will play into us is, um, you do see a little bit of the proposition 13. People holding on to their houses here. It's one of the reasons why we are not community funded, which does lower our tax rate. And this is based off of the assessed tax rate, um, not what properties are currently selling for. So that will work in our favor a bit, but, um, generally anytime you see first round, um, funds are there's always a, a round two. Um, and then I do think that there will be specific program requirements, like they're going to need to bring something back about the TK and the kindergarten, um, with the restrooms. And now that that funding's off the table. So all of the plans that we're working on, that includes TK, um, currently, um, at McKinley, their original plans, the, um, classrooms for TK were only at 1,200 square feet. We're going back to the drawing board because they have to be 1315, 1350 to qualify. So we're making sure at each stage that we're meeting all of those requirements. And then a lot of these funds will also be first come, first served. So you, you apply quickly. Um, we're working on closing out. Matthew and I have received numerous emails, um, from the Division of the State Architecture on old program closeout because there's all these things you can't do. So though that there are school districts that will qualify because they have that higher socio-economically disadvantaged rate, if they're not closing out their old projects, if they're not meeting the minimum size requirement, requirements, they won't, um, they will not qualify. So that kind of works. It lowers the threshold a little bit.
And to your point, Sheldon, I mean, I know if it's this Ed Source article that you're talking about, yeah, that's, it's fascinating, but I think what we can all agree on is if there's a state, if there is state matching money, we want, we would like to get, we would like to get some state matching money for, for, for Pedaluma City Schools. All methods going to work in our favor or against us. I really don't get a sense of.
Did you say that you were going to send that to us? Okay, thank you.
All right. Future business. It is summer. So what, what do you people want?
What does that mean? I mean, they got more time to.
I don't have more time. I still work all summer fam.
Got my list.
Yeah, go, let's go.
Looking at in and out of school suspensions, alternative to suspensions. Regarding, yeah, just in general, but I always want to know like the, the numbers, because some of the admins said that they are doing both and that number is all wrapped up. So it'd be great to see the breakdown by school. Also, the cost of switching to the bio-based alternatives. Just be interesting to know, you know, how much that would cost. Of course, the common assessments that we were promised a year ago, that we would have by now, what's going on with that? Yeah, math. And then where we stand right now on the ELA. Cause I know that was supposed to be developed. And just highlighting what Caitlin said about the bilingual aids. I mean, I know we can't, well, Tony did say it's a living document. Just don't, like the, especially the point you made about the EL students, multilingual learners. Did not see a lot of folks putting that into their SIPs. Go ahead.
The, it seems like the people coming to office hours are not the people going to SIPs, or like going to site council. Because I think I heard that at multiple different school sites and that was not reflected in their SIPSA. Like that they didn't have any bilingual staff or like, the secretary speaks a little Spanish, so they get by or like, maybe the custodian that's floating there that day can help translate and that's not a custodian's job. No, those are all good things. Anybody? All right. With that, I adjourned this meeting at exactly nine o'clock.